Okay, perfect. So tonight is work session number two for your 2024 budget. Get that going. All right. So tonight we so what was in your agenda packet is officially kind of round one of the budget. Obviously, there will be many more iterations to come, but unlike the last work session, we are giving you some initial financial figures. However, we'd like to start tonight to really talk through some of the the items you asked staff to follow up on from the first work session. So that's what we'll spend the starting part of this. We have quite a few third parties here with us tonight, whether it's online or in person that we'd like to invite up to answer any questions you might have. Um, we'll want to then kind of dive into again the tax revenue reserves fund and an assessment of just both revenue and funding revenue and expenditures by fund and then get into an open discussion at the end. So to kick us off, trustee Severs had asked for just a reminder about the strategic plan. Wanted to just remind you all that every objective within the strategic plan has some sort of budgetary component to it. So just a reminder, objective number one, if the budget is approved, every staff member will move to their minimum salary or hourly rate. Objective number two, we've budgeted funds to assist with legal and engineering time that's related to protecting the town's water rights. That's already in your budget. Objective number three, we have all of the necessary matching funding or just general town funding for your branding and creative identity plan, although that may exhaust this year, water and sewer rate study, comp plan, multimodal transportation plan, the post, although it is being done by staff, and the Big Springs egress study. For objective number four, we are identifying that, of course, we'll complete not only safer main streets, but the transportation improvement sidewalk project. Those are both set to end next year, so we'll exhaust that funding. We're working with JBA to do a LiDAR assessment of the roadways, and so that's added into the budget and is also a part of the Big Springs egress funding. We have budgeted funds to train and disseminate information on emergency and disaster management. That's a part of the police department budget. We have funds and utilities for an asset management system. In the parks department, we're going to see all of the metropolitan football funds exhausted, and we have funds for working on the town hall for some of that building maintenance. For objective number five. Just mute your turn your volume down. Sorry. For objective number five, we're talking about different ways to augment and leverage the town's financial resources. So we're really looking at multiple other revenue streams. And that includes, but not limited to paid parking, speed cameras, fees for EV chargers, SDR regulatory fees, occupational tax, and we did add in kind of a sustainability and permit fee for consideration that we'd like to talk about tonight. And lastly, number six, should it change language? We have set aside, you agreed to set aside ARPA funds to either build, promote, assist with affordable housing as your objective number six. So everything we're doing is tying right back to the strategic plan. All right, your updates. So the first thing we wanted to talk about tonight is the speed cameras. So online with us are members of Vera Mobility to answer some questions, and I also believe that Sergeant Miriam is on to also speak to his perspective on speed cameras. So just kind of a reminder, we had brought speed cameras to you last month. Um, I think perhaps the delivery was different than what we should have done. You know, of course, we recognize there's a revenue component here, but this is a safety matter above all. You know, ideally, if people are not speeding, you know, the way I think it was explained to me best is sure, this is like a safety tax, but you only pay it if you speed. So being responsible drivers and not speeding, you know, that's obviously the goal here. The goal is not to issue tickets, but we recognize that people are speeding. And so there should be some enforcement of that. But our officers can only do so much. So for example, if our officers are tied up with a call, they're not addressing the safety measures related to speeding. They're tied up with that call where safety cameras excuse me, speeding cameras really offer that opportunity to help deter speeding in town or to take the necessary action to fine those who are. So there are some options when it comes to speed cameras. There are permanent cameras that could be installed. It is important to note that if they're on any sort of highway, we would need seat out approval and don't currently have that. And there's also mobile cameras which could be kind of moved throughout town. Currently, under the $20,000 per month, if we were to work with Vera Mobility, that would be for two permanent cameras plus one mobile camera that could move throughout town. The reason we're really recommending Vera Mobility, and I did do three estimates, is they handle everything from installation to maintenance, monitoring, all the administrative components, so there isn't anything put on staff. And that's really big, I think, for any of our third parties that we engage with. We as staff don't have the capacity to take some of these things on. Um, so again, we do have representatives from that organization here. If we were to do this, the town would need to adopt an ordinance. And and the potential here of revenue is $30,000 a month, and that would be above and beyond kind of the break even point of the $20,000 per month for the equipment. It is important, though, you asked us last time about the collections. Tickets can't be sent to collections unless the registered owner is personally served. So that's one of the the components you asked us to look into. Before I turn it over to Sergeant Miriam, I just want to go over kind of Boulder County because some questions were asked of us is what, you know, what's the ticket structure if Boulder County writes them? Typically, tickets are four points, which means we charge 165 a ticket. Sergeant Miriam really estimates that we could be looking at about $80,000 a year in revenue from just their department writing tickets. And and one consideration, though, is that this could be above and beyond the revenue from speed cameras. So what is currently in your budget is a combination from a revenue standpoint. We took the thirty, the 120,000 that we budgeted for the speed cameras.
We took 30,000 plus 12, the 360,000, added 80,000, so that's a total revenue of 440,000. But then we put in a line item for cost at 20,000 per month for 240,000. So for speed, for the speed cameras, it's a net of 120,000, like we had discussed last time, plus then the 80,000 that the sergeant is.
I'm curious, the cost went up from 180,000 to 240,000. We were talking 15,000, 15,000 a month in cost. Two weeks ago, now we're talking 20. I don't understand why we assumed 120,000 revenue when we all we know is that the cost went up 60,000.
So last time when we talked, I did net 120,000 revenue, even though it had the 15,000 for your member per month. I did actually only budget 120,000 in net revenue.
Right, which should be a total of 300,000. So like 15,000 a month plus 10,000 a month is 25,000. So why were you, I just don't understand why we jumped to assuming 30,000.
Yep. So so originally, the estimate that was provided to us was $15,000 a month, and then we you asked us to go back and meet with Vera Mobility, and we did, and through further calculations identified that it's 20,000. And so that was just a correction from the last presentation to this presentation.
Right.
Miranda, I can, I don't mean to jump in, but I can speak to why that, why that occurred, if that's relevant. Yeah, absolutely. You know, sorry to interrupt. My name is Colton Kidd. I represent the sale of new business for Vera Mobility. And I'm very happy to be here with the Board of Trustees with the City of Netherland. Side note, my wife and I got engaged not too far away from Netherland and love the area. I definitely drove in a little bit too fast on the approach from Boulder, so definitely understand what's going on there. The original pricing model that we sent over, uh, I I will say was unclear. It showed two fixed cameras at 5,000 per month, and it showed one mobile at about 8,500 per month. But that was unclear. It looked like there was one for 5,000 and one for 8,500. So the 15,000 was actually 20,000 because there were two 5,000 per month cameras rather than one. So that model, the 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 figures that were presented before were only figuring for one fixed camera and one mobile camera. For two fixed approaches, bidirectional on that approach from Boulder, that's 5,000 per, and then the mobile is 8,500 per. So that that may have been our issue with presenting a clarified pricing model, but that was always the pricing in terms of 5,000 per fixed and then 8,500 per mobile. And we apologize for the confusion.
No, that, thank you. Appreciate that. Just clarification. I guess for me, when we looked at this two weeks ago, we we saw it could it could rope in 360,000 a year. But when we did the numbers that we heard, it was 150, 15,000 a month in cost, and you were assuming 10,000 in revenue. That's 25,000. You were taking kind of how I interpreted that, you were taking a conservative angle on what we would meet. Now we know that it will actually be 20,000, and you're still assuming, now you've just assumed, well, it costs more, but we'll still make.
Right.
Like, it almost to me seems like the the estimate should have gone down to 5,000 a month.
I I think I'd have to look at the numbers from the first budget session. I just know that the net effect is exactly the same as it was during our first budget session, 120,000 dollars of revenue, net revenue. I don't recall the numbers from the first budget session. I'd have to.
No, I mean, that's, yeah.
I do. I mean, it was 15,000.
No, 15,000 cost.
Now it's 20.
Yeah, you remember that very well.
And 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 the revenue stayed the same. So that that just seems optimistic.
30,000, wasn't it revenue and 15,000 cost, but I went ahead and I thought, you know what, I'm just going to budget conservatively, conservatively at 120,000.
I think that was wise, and I think we should still do that. And
Yeah, definitely.
So that would put us really at 60,000 is what we.
I guess I don't understand your math.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is 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 it would be, you know, we're gonna get 30,000, we're gonna spend 15,000 for 15,000, which is $180,000 a year. So even though you increase.
Okay, I I liked it. What I walked away from is we spoke, there's this 30,000 a month number that Vera gives us. But what we got two weeks ago was that it'll cost us 15,000 a month. And you conservatively budgeted, it'll earn us another 10. So that's 25,000 a month. The fact that the actual cost went up 5,000 to me shouldn't just assume, oh, we're going to make $5,000 more now a month. We should stick with that conservative 25,000 dollars a month, and we owe 20, so we earn five.
The revenue, though, technically on the original figures would have been 120,000 dollars, or excuse me, 180,000 dollars a month, 15,000 dollars times 12. And so we went with 120. So even though the price has increased, 120 is still appropriate to us because we had already knocked it down by 60,000 from the revenue from last time.
I think what Billy is saying is that we should budget, we shouldn't, that we should actually budget less than 120,000 net
I am.
because of the increase in price. We budgeted 120,000 net last time, then it should go down if the price is increased.
Okay.
Right. Like, if we were to, if we were to be consistent with that conservative estimate.
Sure. I understand now what you're saying. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I guess we just wanted to share why. And and perhaps maybe Mayor Billy, before we get into the discussion, I would love to give Sergeant Miriam an opportunity to share why he feels it's worth, this is worth exploring and implementing from a public safety standpoint, and he is on the phone. Sergeant Miriam.
Yeah, so and I'm not keen on the budget, but the thing that's sticking out to me as it's also gone from one fixed camera and one mobile camera to ingress and egress from town on the fixed camera. So even though the cost went up 5,000 dollars from the initial budget, maybe it's because now we're getting that traffic exiting town as well. So that was just my thought on that. But from a law enforcement perspective, um, the whole point of traffic control is public safety. The goal is to not write tickets, or sorry, the goal is not writing tickets or making citizens pay money. They already pay to have drivers the privilege to drive. They pay insurance. They pay road taxes through their license plates. They pay taxes on gas. Um, so driving is already expensive. The issue we have from a law enforcement perspective, um, the last numbers I got, I think already this year, Colorado is somewhere between 240 and 280 deaths in vehicle-related accidents. Um, and a majority of those are due to excessive speed, whether the person's intoxicated, sober, legal to drive, not legal to drive, all those considerations don't really matter. What ends up killing people in car accidents is speed. Cars are built more safely than they ever have been, thankfully, with airbags, modern frames, and everything else. Um, but my concern for the town of Netherland is as we are looking at getting more businesses in town, um, trying to build the city and make it a place people want to be and a downtown area that's robust, people in town want to visit, and visitors want to come see and spend time there. Not only are we going to be increasing vehicle traffic, um, and then on top of that, Eldora keeps growing and adding more people. But what we're also going to be increasing is foot traffic. Um, people crossing near the traffic circle. There is the bus stop right there on East Street on the highway coming into town. And we also have students walking to um, the teen center. We have people down by the lake, and they don't always take the roads through town to get back to the main area of town. Oftentimes, they do walk on the highway, which also becomes a consideration in winter when that may be the first street plowed and the safest place for someone to walk. We also know that the bicycle traffic can be very heavy. And so those uh, numbers of fatal accidents aren't only considering people that are seated inside the vehicle. It is people that are either on the road legally or illegally. So with the extended amount of traffic we have, um, it already gets congested in town. People get frustrated, or they've just come up the canyon. People often drive way too quickly into town. The speed cameras, in essence, would be a deterrent 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So if you follow the law and you're not speeding, you won't be given a citation. Um, I've heard, I don't know if complaints is the right word, complaints from people that it's not fair. If you're not there to catch me, why should I be issued a ticket? My combat to that is, well, you've still agreed to follow the rules of the road when you take your driving test and you get the privilege of a driver's license. So from a public safety perspective, it not only keeps drivers safe, but it also keeps our pedestrians, children, and bicyclists safe that may be traveling along the roadways. I also heard concerns about possible like double jeopardy where, well, what happens if the speed camera gets someone and then you're running traffic in the same area and you pull that person over? So from other people I've talked to, um, that have speed cameras in their towns, we would just notify the camera company and say, hey, I stopped this person this date and time, and they were issued a Town of Netherland citation. Please do not issue them the citation from the speed camera. So in essence, even if we were still to run traffic in that area and have a physical officer presence, that citizen or visitor would not be getting fined twice for the same amount or for the same violation. Lastly, and the camera company, I believe it's Colton, could probably speak to this better. But when a deputy issues a ticket, it's an average of 165 dollars for that speed violation. The camera company doesn't charge that much. And also, the other bonus to the driver of the vehicle is it's a zero-point violation, which the state of Colorado and insurance deems as a non-moving violation. So it's not a safety driving violation because they're not contacted by a law enforcement officer. So there's no negative implications on their insurance. So with the with the cameras, the bolstered officer presence, the the goal would be to have no speeders in town and end up costing the town 20,000 dollars a month because no one's speeding. That's the ultimate end goal, but we know that is not what will happen. Because we all, we all speed from time to time, and we all have to pay the consequences for that. And unfortunately, law enforcement will always have a job because there's always people that are not following the rules. It would be a great day in my life if law enforcement was not needed, and everybody lived harmoniously and followed the rules and the laws, and we could live in a perfect society. But as we know, that won't happen. So until that day comes, my mindset is whatever we can do to bolster public safety for the 99% of the people that are out trying to enjoy Netherland and just have a nice day outside. And we just can slow that other 1% down occasionally, whether it's with a summons or a warning or whatever it may be. Maybe that is worth all the money in the world to me if we can stop a couple accidents or fatalities. Um, I think that's the way the town should look. But I'm I'm not in control. I just have my one little piece of the pie. So I'm curious if there's any questions based on what I have said or um, ethical dilemmas people may have along these lines.
Hi, this is Tanya online. I just have one comment about everything you said, and I appreciate all your information and your time. Um, the thing is, when you have a camera that gives someone a ticket and they're driving through town, coming fast down the canyon, whatever, that accident's going to happen with or without the violation because they haven't realized that they've gotten the ticket. They're not going to realize it until they get in the mail two weeks later or whatever. And often, it could just be a tourist coming through. I don't see it as much as a deterrent as you think it is, except for the, you know, locals who are going to know it's there are going to go slow right there, and then they're going to go as fast as they want in the canyon, um, because they know. So I just, I don't see it as the the safety deterrent that it's being touted because of the fact, like I said, it's not like a human, like when you pull somebody over, then they're like, oh, shoot, I gotta slow down. Okay, they're more sobered up. They're going to go down the canyon slower. They're just going to blaze through that. They're going to get the ticket later. They're going to pass in double yellows. Nobody's in the canyon where, you know, the problems are actually happening. Or this is just right, you guys are putting it right there, you know, where the limits change. It's just kind of a speed trap more than anything. Um, that's how I'm seeing it. Um, I don't disagree with everything you're saying about safety and the, you know, the number of people who are dying because of speed. Um, I just think that it's more effective when an actual officer has engagement versus the camera that you get the ticket a week later. Um, I don't think that's going to stop. That accident happened. The accident's still going to happen. But that's just my perspective. I really do appreciate everything you said. Thank you.
So, Tanya, I agree that physical officer presence or a car sitting out there will always be more effective than a camera. And um, studies have shown from uh, officers making a contact with somebody, whether they're issued a summons or a warning, changes that driver's behavior for approximately three months. So you are 100% right that physical officer presence beats a camera. And I don't want people to think that, oh, we have cameras in this area. The deputies are not going to patrol it. Um, once we're fully staffing, get people up there, deputies will still be at the edge of town. And that's a speed deterrent, but it's also a crime deterrent, letting people know law enforcement is active in the area and we are in the town. So you're you're right on that. The the hard part for me along your thing was the uh, down the canyon. The canyon, uh, if you don't drive it every day or often, is a dangerous place to drive when the weather's good and it's light. We're coming into winter. We know it's going to be icy. It's going to be slick, and it's going to get dark earlier, causing the ice to form even earlier. So people who drive it often are going to be more slow and steady, and you're going to get those people that are frustrated trying to leave the mountains or get up to the mountains, and they are still going to be driving illegally, passing illegally. You are you are right on that. Um, but from my perspective, as being over law enforcement in the town of Netherland, I'm concerned with this meeting about what happens in the town of Netherland and how to keep people visiting the town of Netherland safe and not as much as what happens down the canyon. Now, if there's a big crash in the canyon and the Netherland deputies are closest to respond, 100%, they will have permission to go and do everything they can to assist medical and help with that accident. Um, so I don't want you to think that I'm saying we don't, that doesn't matter to us. But my perspective is the safety for the town of Netherland. And Colton, if you could talk in, I believe in the state of Colorado, and please tell me if I'm wrong, there is always a warning that says speed camera ahead, which is the first deterrent. It's letting people know, hey, if you don't slow down, you are going to get a ticket. So even if they're not physically getting a ticket, they will be seeing that, oh, camera ahead, I need to slow down. Am I incorrect on that?
No, Sergeant Miriam, you're correct about that. And additionally, you know, all of our implementations specifically to Colorado and most of the Western United States involve a month-long period of non-citation issue of you're going to get a warning in the mail for the first month. You're getting a clue that this is going to happen on an ongoing basis before you're ever cited for it. Um, you're you're absolutely correct about being warned about what's going to be happening there. And something that um, one of our account managers was able to to bring to the table the other day when we were having this conversation uh, with Miranda, and was that something like 80 to 90% of the cited traffic on an ongoing basis is not local residents, it's tourists. It's it's folks that are coming in and are getting cited violating, uh, you know, those statutes that are there local to Netherland. Um, that specifically is designed to improve that safety. But overall, what we've seen, and Tanya, I appreciate your input as well for sure. I think you make a great point about how, you know, if you're seeing a a cop car, you might have a little different behavior than if you're seeing a camera. Uh, but the data bears out, um, you know, we have over 7,500 camera systems in the United States, over 300 municipalities, counties, and states uh, that work with us. And the data bears out that the driver behavior does change overall, whether or not it's a it's a person that changes for three months. Um, you know, my personal story is back when Texas had red light cameras. I ran three of them, and then I got three tickets, and I never did it again, and I still don't. And that kind of thing is just like, you know, what 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 are we really talking about here? We're talking about increasing the public safety for the better and for always. Um, which is done, you know, Sergeant Miriam can, you know, you can clarify to me, how long would it take you to write a citation? 10 minutes, 20 minutes? How long is that taking you? Uh, what's the follow-up work there? What about a system that would be able to do, you know, 10 of them simultaneously within a five-minute period and issue those citations automatically without having, you know, having to hire 10, 20 additional personnel, additional deputies to come in and create roughly the same effect for a lot more money? So I'm sorry, that was a long rambling response, Sergeant Miriam, but to answer your answer your question, yes, you're going to be alerted. And then, of course, there is that one month period on the front where we're saying, hey, we're going to do this. This is going to happen. Here's where the cameras are, et cetera.
Yeah, and the and the national standard for a traffic stop with, and I'll call it a simple citation, so the driver has a valid licensed vehicle. They have a valid driver's license, and they have current and active insurance, and they're be cited for the one thing the officer visually saw, whether it was speed or uh, to. uh, taillight out, uh, what we'll consider a simple traffic stop is supposed to take eight to ten minutes. So, um, Colton, your, your estimation was correct that, that ten-minute mark is what we're supposed to be at for issuing one citation.
Right, and Sergeant, if I'm, if I'm correct, you're the only officer there within the city limits of Netherlands, is that correct? As current.
The only full-time and we have currently assigned two deputies. Uh, and night shift, night shift is six P M. to six A M. And those two deputies, uh, one on each side of the week, so, uh, one every night is supposed to spend, uh, six hours of their assigned twelve-hour shift within town limits. And then, uh, hopefully in April or May, once people graduate the police academy and finish, we will have full-time deputies up there from six A M. to six P M. uh, every day of the week. Currently, we are staffing extra duty, which at this rate is about fifty percent of the days. And typically ends up falling more on the back half of the week. Um, at this point, we are not able to mandate people work overtime, so it's still on a voluntary basis. So currently we're, um, I'd say staffed on day, day shift about fifty percent, maybe even a little bit less.
Got it. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Hi, Sergeant Asa, um, this is Justine Sterling. So typically in these conversations, the argument of I don't want to see cameras because of Big Brother, like it's that feeling. I was wondering if you have any type of argument or, you know, a response to something like that.
I guess I would need a little more information on what someone was considering Big Brother. I'm, I'm assuming it's like government watching me twenty-four seven. Even when they are not out here to actively catch me, they're utilizing my tax dollars to put in this camera to find me later. Is that kind of the, the thought on that?
Yeah, Billy, it looks like you wanna say something too, but I was, I was gonna add.
Yeah, I mean, like, but, you know, they recognize every plate coming and going and, and that is the kind of thing I hear people, you know, I've talked to over thirty people about this in the last two weeks and, um, you know, those who mentioned, not, not every one of them, just to be clear, talk about Big Brother, but, but several did, you know, quite a few and I'd say it's just more that, that, that presence and, you know, I didn't move here to have that kind of, you know, to be in that kind of town or, yeah, I know it'll be, you know, the camera will know when I'm leaving town, when I'm coming into town, you know, whether I'm speeding or not, it's gonna pay attention, you know, what is perceived is it, is paying attention to all the cars coming and going. That may not be true. That's what's perceived.
Yeah, there are, there are cameras that, um, the city of Longmont, Town Alliance, Town of Superior, uh, Louisville, um, they have cameras called, uh, that are run by a company called Flock. So Flock cameras store and record every license plate that goes past that camera. Um, so where law enforcement has utilized those, uh, we get a notification if it's a stolen vehicle. If the driver, the registered owner has warrants for their arrest. Um, we've also used that to say, hey, someone saw a white Chevy Blazer pull up to their house and steal packages off their porch. And so we can search white Chevy Blazer and then that helps investigate those crimes. My understanding of these cameras is that they are just marking speeders and those are the only ones that are actively captured. I do not believe that these have, and Colton, please tell me if I'm wrong, active license plate readers. And if they did, they don't have a database that I can then go in and search to see, hey, when does this car come to town and when does it leave? So that I can try and set up on that vehicle's pattern if I know that we're trying to contact them for something else.
Sure, and you make a great point there. Um, the type of technology that we're talking about today is not A L P R related. So Flock and Recor are two companies. And ironically, Ver mobility, we do resell those, uh, to municipalities and counties and special districts that wanna take advantage of them. Um, if there is a concern about government overreach or whatever you'd like to call it, that's not what's being done here. There's not a massive database of every license plate that's being taken. What's being captured is violators. So somebody that violates the speed limit in a specific area is being captured on camera and being cited for that violation, which is essentially just like a law enforcement officer visually witnessing it and issuing a citation. Now, Mayor Billy, I understand your, your comment is that it's the perception. This is what people are think, thinking is happening, whether it's happening or not. That's something that's, that's sort of a, a gray area, right? Like, how do we, how is this being marketed to the citizens? Nobody wants to get ticketed for anything. But at the same time, like the sergeant said, we all agreed to the rules when we got a driver's license. We didn't agree to say, I only wanna follow the rules when I can get away with it. Um, or when I, when I, I wanna break the rules when I can get away with it. I don't know. That's my perspective. Uh, that may be law enforcement's perspective, but I, I would say that there's not much of an ethical or moral differentiation between a human being law enfor- enforcement officer witnessing the violation of a statute or a camera witnessing the same violation of a statute at, you know, four K resolution and many times per minute as, as however many people violate in that time period. So I'm not sure if that answered your question, Asa, but I was hoping it did.
Yeah, it did. Thank you. Board members, did that answer your question for the Big Brother? And if this was something that was implemented, and I believe I heard before this meeting that it's an open forum where town members could come and ask questions that could be explained to them? Would that be an opportunity we would give the citizens and concerned community?
That, and, um, I'm getting someone raising their hand in the audience here. I'm not sure that, that will, and I'll ask Miranda, happen today, but there is a public. There's a real hearing on this in three weeks, so, you know, we're in a good situation where we have, um, you know, four to five weeks to do our budget. Um, and I, and there will be chance, chances for folks to, on the twenty-first and the twenty, I guess, to give public comment. And as for tonight, Miranda, tell me about our work session.
That's your call.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I, I do have a question.
If we do it, we'll probably, um, do it at a specific time, so go ahead.
Mar- Miranda, do we have data on whether or not these areas are safety problems in town? That is to say, do we have data regarding the number of accidents that we're having per year? The number of injuries, the number of fatalities that are occurring in the town of Netherlands where these cameras are proposed to be placed?
Yeah, not readily accessible for you tonight. If we can bring that back to you.
Right, so I mean, but it's, it, in that, just in that vein, if we're gonna frame it as a safety issue rather than a revenue issue, then I would like to see that there's a safety problem, right? Because if there isn't a safety problem, then it's not really a safety issue and it's actually a revenue issue and that's an argument made in bad faith, right? So I would, I would like to know. Uh, I would like to have information on that. Um, I'm also, I'm much more interested, I, I mean, people know my perspective on this. I do think there's a huge ethical difference between uh, a camera issuing a ticket and a person issuing a ticket. A person has judgment. A person can see when someone's driving recklessly. A person can make a call. A camera just automatically issue something based on a preset set of conditions that are, uh, extremely, uh, you know, rigid and, uh, can often be, I think, quite unfair.
Well, and sir, if I may, I'm so sorry to interrupt you there, but if the speed limit is the speed limit, what sort of judgment is relevant to whether or not that person violated that, that town statute?
I mean, I don't wanna live in a world where we have these fixed numbers and, and, and we don't have flexibility in our societies. I think that that's absurd to say that everything needs to be, uh, done to an, an exact specification on a fifteen mile per hour or twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. I think that that's not the way anybody wants to live. Um, and certainly not the way that I wanna live. Uh, so that, that's just my feeling on it. I'm not gonna make that argument anymore. I've made it before. But I, if we are gonna frame it as a safety issue, I would like to see, uh, the safety argument made properly. Because I don't think that that's actually been made in this meeting and I don't think we have the information to make it. Um, there was one more thing that I wanted to say, but now I've, I've, oh, yeah, I'm much more interested in the mobile cameras. Um, um, if I were to agree to speed cameras, which I probably wouldn't anyway, but if, if, if I were, I'm interested in mobile cameras, uh, especially in regards to high, uh, high-traffic pedestrian areas where cars are moving quickly. Thinking of things like Big Springs Drive and School Road and, uh, on the way to the high school and things like that where maybe there would actually be a legitimate safety concern. I'm not convinced as of yet that that safety concern is into the, in, in the entry and exits to town. And that's, that's just my feeling on this.
And I, uh, sorry, this is Asa again. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the, um, exact city limits at this point. I'm still working on figuring that out in my mind. Um, but the county road going to Town of Eldora, Eldora Ski Resort and Netherlands High School, I thought most of that was county maintained and had not been, uh, annexed by the city at this point. Am I incorrect on that?
No, that's correct.
Okay, so, yeah, we wouldn't even have, uh, jurisdiction or authority to place those cameras on that road to generate revenue for the, the town of Netherlands because it's not annexed into the town.
Indeed, and I, and I think that that's important to note that we shouldn't be, put speed cameras just for the sake of putting speed cameras. They should be placed at the places where it actually matters and where we actually might be, uh, saving people some, some real pain and heartache. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say was that I don't think a comprehensive review has been done on the speed limits within town limits and whether or not we actually think that those should be the speed limits within town limits. Um, so that's another thing. If we're gonna put a speed camera somewhere, I think we should be pretty damn sure that, that, that the speed limit there makes sense. Right, and, and it isn't arbitrary.
On, on canyon, you know, and the, the highways, um, seventy-two or one nineteen, whatever that, those happen to be where the highest likelihood to put cameras due to the amount of traffic, traffic flow, things like that. Um, so we're gonna have the most safety issues there based on having the most amount of vehicles. Um, a lot of those, and I can try to get a specific and actual real answer for you. But a lot of those cities, or sorry, speed limits are determined by C dot. So C dot says what the speed limit is based on population, traffic density, traffic flow. Um, and so C dot mandates those speed limits on those type roads. Now, if it's.
I was referring more to mobile trailers that we might place throughout town on different streets.
Okay, I hear you there.
Um, the only thing I'd add here is when assessing safety, um, it would probably behoove us just to pull where some of these existing tickets are being, um, you know, the citations are being written. Um, you know, having worked for a company that was really into safety, um, we also assess near misses. And sometimes it's a little bit harder, right, when we're talking about traffic violations, like what could have potentially happened. But if it's not necessarily crashes or whatnot, that we have data that's available, I would pull and I would rely on what the police officers, where they are currently writing those tickets and how much are the speed limit they are writing those for. I think that is still viable data that we should take in distance coverage.
Yeah, and, um, I don't know if Troy's on this call. Um, I'm trying to get ac- I'm trying to get access from the county, um, to have the ability to look at all the calls in the town of Netherlands and be able to come up with graphs and everything that is super helpful for town administrators to know what type of crimes are happening, everything else. And I believe that we would be able to focus in on certain areas of where the traffic violations are occurring as well. Um, the nice thing about that data, um, unfortunately, we have ran out of Netherlands citations at this point. The deputies used them all. We are still, um, getting the electronic citations. And Troy has ordered us a thousand, um, paper citations. So that, uh, to backtrack, the nice thing that would be nice about me being able to pull the county data is that it would also show when we have issued state summonses within city limits or town limits. Um, because Troy may not have that answer, but we would be able to show you the, the main areas deputies patrol. And, you know, if the speed limit's twenty-five, what are they stopping the people for? Are they stopping them for, uh, going, you know, thirty-six or is it forty-one? Is it forty-five? What are the main, main areas the violations are occurring? And what is the average speed people are going over? Um, I will get with town.
Is the state summons a ticket given by a state trooper? Is that what that means?
No, so, um, if the, so, yes, state trooper can give state summonses. Um, but the way the sheriff's office works is since we have the state post authority, if we write a ticket in a municipality that is not, uh, ran, uh, by the sheriff's office, we do not write a municipal summons for that jurisdiction. So Long, Boulder, Erie, Louisville, those municipalities all have their own police. So that we cannot write a county ticket because that generates county revenue. We must write a state ticket. So the direction deputies were given by me when they ran out of Netherlands tickets was, I still want enforcement up here. I still want officer presence and I still want you guys to be proactive. And if you feel that somebody needs a summon, I don't want them getting a warning based on the fact that we are out of tickets. So please issue them a state summons if it's something that is deserving of a summons. So, uh, the state summonses are our backup plan when we are out of uh, Town of Netherlands citations, if that makes sense.
Uh, but you wouldn't have recorded that only the state would? Is that how that works?
Uh, no, we would have record for our internal, uh, like Boulder County reporting.
Okay.
For those tickets. I wouldn't have records of what state patrol does within town limits if they do anything.
Okay.
So through, hoping I can get from I T. is where the, uh, Netherlands citations were written and where the state citations were written within town limits.
Okay, thanks. Other comments from trustees?
The biggest thing I see this of doing is yes, for safety, yes, it does bring in revenue for the violators. Um, or from the violators, but it's also a productivity offset for existing officers. Being the daughter of two police officers, this is just common things that, you know, I grew up with in our very small town, very, very much like Netherlands. It helps police officers focus on police work. And like I made the comment last time, it lets the robots do the things that can help, again, the human touch, the high human touch that's important from police officers. It lets them focus on that. It doesn't mean that they're not ever going to be trafficking, right, that they're gonna be policing. But that's, that's not what it means. It gives the ability to focus on those high-touch, um, police work, which is what we want them. That's the biggest thing for me.
And, and I completely agree with that. Um, if, if I'm understanding Miranda correctly, what, what the town desires out of the Boulder County Sheriff's Office is really on the community policing model. So you guys are not paying us just to sit in the office and wait for a call for service. You're not paying for us just to go sit in our car and only stop speeders. What, and please tell me if I'm wrong, what the town really wants is to have the training and capabilities that our deputies have in being able to respond to major incidents when something happens with professionalism and high-quality training. But along with that, still treat the town as if we are a small police department and have our deputies making relationships with business owners and citizens where they know them by name. When they see them, they stop and wave and have a conversation with them. If they're getting a cup of coffee, to say hi to the people serving the coffee as well as speaking to people who are sitting down having cups of coffee and just see how they're doing and understand what's going on in town, what people are concerned with and what those people need by building actual relationships. And so it's a hard thing to balance of understanding that law enforcement is not a profitable business. It costs a lot more money than it makes. And it shouldn't be a for-profit business. That's not that's not
I'm also from a police family and yeah, I'm glad to hear you say it shouldn't be.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a heavy burden for the town to have to spend almost a million dollars for two full-time deputies, two half-time deputies, a sergeant, and then, you know, detective services vehicles. It's a heavy burden on the town. And if you guys were telling us we had to make a million dollars in revenue to pay for it, it would be an unlitable burden. But that's also not what the town of Netherland seems to want. And the deputies that I have spoken with that are interested in coming to work in the town of Netherland next year when it's available do not want to be hard, hard chargers who just go out and, you know, make all the arrests and do everything. They want to be able to have relationships within the community and know like, hey, when I contact, I'm, I'm going to use Joseph for an example because I've contacted him many times. I don't remember his last name and it doesn't matter. But I know that he is a chronic alcoholic and I know that he has major back problems. If I worked in a large city and I had Joseph speaking to me for the first time in his aggressive intoxicated manner, I may end up taking him down with a control hold or something and really unintentionally hurting him. But because I have knowledge of Joseph and I have knowledge of the other people that we continually deal with in town, the people with mental health issues, the people that need housing, I can be more compassionate and understand what's going on and not only keep myself safer, but keep the citizens safer. I've been up there a very short time and I've already been able to establish rapport and relationships with the citizens as well as some of the business owners. You know, gone to BNF and the gas stations and talked to the attendants and the employees, just letting them know, hey, we're here in town. Introduced myself. And I've done that with most of the businesses on the main level of the Tebow Center as well. And that's because my understanding of what you guys wanted from the sheriff's office was the personal connection to the community. You didn't want some large agency coming in and running it like a large metropolitan city. You still wanted the, hey, I can go speak with that officer about what's going on in my life and not worry that it just means somebody's going to jail. That will come up with a creative solution. So on that thing.
Thanks, Asa.
You're welcome.
I, I, I need to, I need to bring it back in, I think, to the trustees for a bit. I'd ask you for now that, that's just a trustees talk. We have a lot more things to talk through. And I want to hear from all the trustees and I want to talk myself, so.
But we do really appreciate
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I mean, that might've been, uh, we, we're going to get to the law enforcement budget later. So hearing all that now is really kind of good information, you know, as we get later in the meeting. So I'm sorry to cut you off, but then.
I just think that that, that approach can extend to speeding tickets.
Yeah. And then just the, the last thing, the before stated that, you know, we can't be out there doing traffic 24 hours a day. The cameras would help us enforce and keep the public safe 24 hours a day, so. And with that, I'll be quiet.
Well, thanks. We'll, we'll probably want to hear from you here again soon, but I appreciate it. Jesse, Tom, Billy, what do you want to say?
I'm favorable of the, of the approach for all the reasons that have already been articulated, which better than I could hope to. And I am also very much in favor of Eric's preference for the mobile units. And I would also, I, I feel like a nice prototypical exploration into this approach would be to consider two, two mobile units and see how that suits us. And then I would imagine that those would have a potential resale value if they kind of have a, you know, if our, if our community or our town or it just doesn't work for us. If it doesn't work out, then we, we try to get, get, get rid of the infrastructure like a lot of other old pieces of equipment that we may or may not have.
I don't, I think we'd be returning them to the owner.
Yeah. So that's where I, I feel like I'm all for trying something and seeing how, how it goes. And I think it could be a potential source of revenue, which is a good thing and could increase safety, which is also a good thing.
Thank you.
I agree with what trustee Severs just said, and I really appreciate our, that what Asa Barryam told us in terms of what it means from his side of the fence too. I think, I think mobile cameras make a lot of sense because they keep people on their toes and because you apply a tool where the tool is needed.
Thanks, Tom. Tanya and Nicole, what else would you like to say?
I want to reiterate what Eric said about seeing some data about, you know, where the most accidents occur in our town and fatalities and where the safety hazards are documented to exist. Thereby, if we were to choose to use these cameras, that's where the cameras would go. I think having the sign that says a camera is coming up is really important. I'm curious how big those signs are. I'm currently still not in favor of this because I think community policing requires community policing and not having cameras. But that's where I stand. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nicole?
Yeah. And, you know, again, going to safety data, it would be not just fatalities or crashes. You know, what our existing data is in terms of, you know, tickets that are being issued, how much over the speed limit are these folks driving? That's also important, safety data, even though it didn't actually result in a crash, it's still something to take data to take into consideration to avoid crashes in the future. I would be in favor. Something I've always sort of known to support, community policing. It becomes a part of community policing. It's like I've said before, let the robots do the things that robots are good at. And let the, the police officers focus on the high-touch point.
Thanks, Nicole. Anything else?
Mayor Billy, may I?
Actually
Jump in for one last second?
I prefer not. Um, actually, I'd like us to, we have a lot to do tonight. Um, thank you. Anything else you want to say, Eric? Okay, I mean, I just have a few points to make and then we'll move on. First of all, thank you. I thank you, Colton. And thank you, Sergeant Miriam Asa for, you know, being here and really giving your perspective and giving more information and more facts in and around, as well as perspective in and around the use of these. And thank you, Rita and Miranda. I know you've been busy, busy, busy working these numbers and that this has been a, a big bunch of numbers to work with. And thank you, you know, to all the trustees. I know everyone's intentions are the best to do the right thing for the town. We, I, we all, I think, can agree we want safer driving and revenue so we can fund the town in a way we want to fund the town. Um, you know, I slept on it and thought about a lot of the last two weeks and regretted that I let it proceed, but I feel like it's been valuable to have this process proceed. And I'd like to believe that, you know, we still have the ability to talk through whether or not this will stay in the budget and, um, and we still have a process ahead of us. And I, um, you know, one thing I am appreciative came out of the last two weeks is we now know it's $60,000 more known cost than we thought, than we knew before. So my points are, you know, it's a $240,000 known expense for possible probable revenue, but possible revenue estimated by the vendor. $360,000 divided by 365 days, a thousand bucks a day, forty bucks a ticket, 25 tickets a day every day of the year. If speeding were to decrease, will this decrease revenue? And the point made that really, you know, decreasing revenue might be the goal of, of decreasing speeding, but you know, last two weeks, you know, definitely revenue was a big reason for this to come into the picture. We were paying Boulder County Sheriff's Office with option B, $140,000 just in the option itself plus with the sixty, fifty-eight thousand dollars in incidentals, maybe you can almost tack on at least another 10 for this extra deputy. I would like to see us leverage the greater deputy presence when we're fully staffed, you know, and, and, and I, I, you know, I'm of the opinion forty bucks a ticket with no points would not deter speeding as much as $165 ticket given by a person, a police officer with points. That's just an opinion. It sounds like the debt, the data goes against my opinion and I'll totally respect that and accept that. But I, I do see the value of an expensive ticket with points. A lot of the springs I've gotten from big, a lot of the complaints I've gotten from people at Big Springs is the noise and the speed of motorcycles and cars, you know, opening up at the dam and they're just flying around the far side of the reservoir. I, I've clocked it a bunch of times the last two weeks. It's about nine tenths, just under nine tenths of a mile. They still got a good mile to drive really fast from the dam to where that camera would first see them coming off of East Street. It's about, yeah, just about that to our welcome to the Netherlands sign. So I think, you know, unless we were to work with the county or, you know, we, you know, the, the folks we contracted with and the county to get some sheriffs out there by the dam or in between, we really won't do much to quiet things down. By the time you've gone by East Street, you've pretty much passed Big Springs so that those complaints won't stop with the camera. I think what's going to happen, so back to perception, I think community policing will just be equated like, oh, this is how Boulder County Sheriff does community policing. They bring in cameras and this is how they're going to enforce in our town. And I am concerned with that as we're just getting started this year. You know, there's, you know, some concerns with Ned's reputation as a speed trap town. You know, I, I lived in Grand County for years. It's full of it. Drive-through empire. Those towns are like well-known, those areas for speed traps. I don't know if people want that to be the case here. Um, but I do worry about the, the people, someone, people coupling, you know, Boulder County Sheriff's Office with this kind of technology. And I understand, agree with the need to reduce speed, need to increase revenue. But I just think it's going to be a lot to ask of our community this year. New sheriff, speed cameras, paid parking. It's a lot of big changes that are going to make people really surprised. I mean, paid parking's actually been approved in on the budget for a year. I don't think that's well-known. So I myself am against this. I wouldn't vote for a budget within today. What I'm really going to promote over the next few weeks, and I hope you all do, is that we hear from as many people from the community as possible so we can make a decision the community wants. Um, I know Boulder County Sheriff, Boulder, City of Boulder, I think, had said, maybe you don't do this for a year and you run surveys and get really clear on what the town wants, but I'm going to really work hard to get, you know, mobilize the public to just tell us what they want. Because I think that's going to be important and we have three more opportunities at least for them to do that. And I hope you all reach out and tell everyone you know. I talked to 30 people. Only one wanted it. When I told him it was 240,000 a year, he was like, whoa, maybe not that much. So that's just my anecdotal survey so far. I'm done.
So maybe I could just really quick recap next steps for staff and then we can close this one up. So staff will bring back data regarding the locations that we're interested in maybe placing the speed cameras. And that's not only just maybe how many tickets are issued, but also of course the accidents or fatality data and how much over the speed limit they might be. A comprehensive review of the speed limits is not going to be possible, but I'm happy to bring back the process for that. It sounds like the budget would be amended so that it was two mobile units and then a, a decrease in anticipated revenue. Yes, yes. Okay, I've captured that correctly. Okay. So Mayor Billy ran out, but I think he's getting someone. So moving on to the next one, Sergeant Miriam and Fulton, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Have a say you're welcome to stay, but appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Your board of trustees, thank you all.
Talk to you tomorrow, I'm sure. Um, so next we're talking paid parking. So as, as Mayor Billy just mentioned, we have budgeted for paid parking this year. We really recognize that the majority of our parking is in the visitors' center lot. We wanted to wait until we paid it. I already went over that. So we're still looking at 67 lots. You directed us to go back to talk with Interstate Parking. So I just kind of want to note, we've actually talked with five different parking providers and I actually did one just even this week, or excuse me, last week, and, and still really believe that Interstate, Interstate Parking is the right vendor for us. Do feel we've done our due diligence. They do Idaho Springs, Frisco, Dillon, Crested Butte. They do it all though. So again, I go back to anything we implement, there just cannot be a staff component here. And so what I love about them is they manage it from implementation to management to enforcement. They do it all. And so I've provided some of their really cool websites. Gareth Lloyd is in the room with us to answer questions, who is the president and executive vice president, operating partner. The thing about Interstate Parking is it is a cost share. So whatever the revenue is, we split it. I put a calculator in your pocket. That calculator was given to me by Idaho Springs. So I think it's a very realistic way of calculating this. And we determined the last time we brought this to you, we had a higher revenue. We didn't take into consideration that cost share. That's why you're seeing a decrease, but there is no upfront cost to doing this. And Interstate Parking is willing to do a four-month trial to see really how it works. And so would love to invite Gareth up to share a little more. Wanted to come on up. And Tony, hello, Tony. You'll have to press the button or you're welcome to take a seat, whatever's more comfortable. Press the push button.
Yeah. So basically, we started the company seven years ago. I live in Evergreen. Uh, push it up. Is that better? Okay. And we've had a lot of success working with, uh, we're now in six Colorado communities.
Where, where are you? Where are you located? Which communities? I'm sorry, which of the six communities?
Yeah. So Breckenridge, Crested Butte, Dillon, Frisco, Idaho Springs and Morrison. Uh, very similar situations that you're talking about. You know, a downtown core where there's demand for space. The space has become very valuable to the community in terms of businesses and visitors enjoying the community. We, like, like she mentioned, we, we do everything. So we do the website. We provide the technology, staffing, a lot of community outreach. We've now worked through six communities. So we have a lot of experience with this. And we'd love to work with you guys on this and try, try it for a four-month trial, which is what we did in most of these communities and it's worked out really well.
And maybe I can add, you know, if you take a look at some of their websites, you'll see they do the resident passes, all the things we talked about where residents can park for free. We can do the 15 minutes for free. So someone could grab their sandwich at the deli and head out. They can do all of that. They customize it to what we want and what we, we need. And then also, you know, we set our pay rate and we set it all. They just execute it for us. And, and again, no staff where other companies that Britt talked to and I talked to, there was going to be a staff component and we just really can't take that on. I completed references with Idaho Springs, Frisco and Dillon, and they are thrilled. They love their service. They had nothing but incredible things to say. I really appreciate their customer service. So just the ease in which this happens is, is just really truly kind of the, the peak for them, but many things too, is just the complaints. You know, if people have concerns, they're not calling town hall. They're going to call Interstate Parking and they're so great at working with people. They've also done an incredible job kind of helping to Um, they've also done an incredible job kind of helping to promote what's coming, to educate the residents that this is coming. And, and maybe a little bit of that soft launch in many ways. So it's not straight to citation. But, but that they're community oriented in everything they do. This is just, you know, paid parking. And so I, I know that it may come as a shock, but I did kind of remind some trustees recently, we did do a survey and the survey results were a little mixed and, and for many, they said like, if you're going to do this, let us park for free as residents, right? Or give us that 15 minutes and we're very open and interested in making sure that that's what happens if we are able to, to move forward with this.
Questions and comments from the trustees.
I have a question for Miranda, which is, uh, in, in terms of implementation, we would be writing an ordinance, correct, to allow paid parking? And in that ordinance, would we have to lay out all the details of, uh, I guess it's really an attorney question, but would we have to lay out all the details of, you know, resident passes and 15-minute free period and things like that? Would that be codified in an ordinance?
We could, but you don't have to. So the current ordinance that's going forward just allows us as a use. And so that's before the planning commission for a vote this month and coming to you next month. Well, we've been the ordinance.
But that's more for use for like, for the zone, other zones, well, including public.
Right. So, but what we put in the ordinance was how paid parking would be, would occur. So that there was uniformity and approach. We could, there are communities like at Lakewood has a very specific of how Lakewood does this. And we'd be happy to add that language into our ordinance. That's, this is exactly how it works for Nederland. You get your residence passes, you get the 15 minutes for free. But we also just want a general uniformity language so that private to public, we're all approaching paid parking in the same way.
Yeah, I think we could alleviate a lot of, uh, the, the resident concerns if we baked in those, uh, resident passes and things like that into an ordinance so that it would be difficult for us to just change on the fly.
Sure. Yeah, uh, most communities have done what Miranda has mentioned. Um, because what happens with the program is you start with something and then you go, oh, well, we can do this and you make changes. So if you, if you try and put it into an ordinance, then you're constantly making changes. So, yeah, we're very flexible on that. And, you know, we've worked with each, uh, the attorneys in each community and gone through the ordinance. So we have a lot of experience with it and we can make a lot of recommendations that'll work. Yeah.
Great. This looks good to me. More questions or comments from the trustees?
One thing I noticed, it looks like you brand, um, each town differently and uniquely. It's, uh, it's Park Rec, it's not Interstate Parking.
Right, right.
And, and does that carry you through, uh, to, to your enforcement and things like that?
Totally, totally. Yeah, we've had a lot of success showing, um, that we're partners with the town, but also a separate entity so that people know not to, you know, go to city hall. So the, the website really becomes a portal for the mobility in the community. So we've done some really cool things with mapping now where we show where EV stations are and all kinds of stuff. And it's all included in our class. Everything you see is included in the rev share. So there's no, there's no upfront cost or ongoing cost to the town. Um, so that's worked out really, really well, time and time again.
Tanya and Nicole?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments. I mean, we talked nauseam about this, you know, a while ago. So I think it's time to execute.
Yeah, um, this is Tanya. I'm in favor of this company. I like that there's no upfront costs and that we can customize it, which I'm sure we will have a discussion about those, um, customizations. So thanks for the research.
One more for you. Um, we're, we're probably the smallest town of everything, of any that you've worked with.
Right.
Um, do the revenue estimates that Miranda's presented us look pretty realistic or have you seen?
Yeah, the nice thing is she's got them from Jonathan, who we deal with. We just had a meeting in Idaho Springs today. Um, it's based on that, uh, similar rate, the same rate structure ostensibly. Um, and it's actually a very good, uh, pro forma. I've worked with Jonathan on it.
Right.
Actually, we use it in every municipality we're in, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and then, um, what are the steps if we decide to, to do this, to setting it up?
Um, a lot of community outreach, um, is, is the biggest thing beginning. So we meet, we love to meet with every business. We'll go around to every business and talk to them, explain the program to them, how it'll work for employees, how it'll work for the business. Uh, residents, uh, going around and talking to all the residents. You know, when, when residents find out that the parking is free for them um, and that they're actually going to have somewhere to park because now it's controlled and managed. It's, it's a pretty good sell and that the revenue is generally coming from tourists, um, you know, which is great. It's like, oh, you know, it's been a great revenue source. And a lot of the communities are now doing great things on housing and sidewalks and all kinds of things with the revenue. So it's, it's kind of worked out as a win-win. It's been a lot of fun, actually.
Great. And, and they, from a technology standpoint, are you, uh, how does it work? Are you using license plate readers or?
Yeah, so we do license plate recognition. Um, so the plate, when you register, whether you're a, an employee, a resident, uh, or you're paying for the day, you register your license plate, it's all communicated, communicated to a, a server, which communicates to our phones. So we know if you're a resident, if you're an employee, or if you should have paid. And if you're none of those, then we, then we'll issue a, a violation.
And then you handle the, the collection on the violations as well?
Yeah, the nice thing is because we're so Colorado-based, I live in Evergreen. Uh, we really understand Colorado and mountain towns. So, uh, we've developed a, a complete process with a local company out of Saturn called Saturn Systems, uh, that does the collections. Um, it's all been passed and by each community. Um, and literally we can do, if you want to, robocalls, collection calls. And it will, will affect your credit rating. Uh, so it's a really safe and, and secure system. So it's worked out really well.
Yeah, I used it in, in Breck. I saw me halfway there.
Oh, yeah. Well, we appreciate your business.
Um, I'm looking at the calculator. What's free riders and what are, what's free riders stay like? I just want to understand what.
Say, say that.
In the calculator, there's just operation hours, total spaces, free riders. What is that?
Free riders, uh.
Let me, I have to pull it up. Sorry, I don't have it.
I wondered if that's like locals.
Right.
That would change some numbers, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, right now we're talking 20 bucks, um, a day for eight hours, you know, uh, 215 hour, um, for 67 spots. And, but if, if locals are parking there, I just assume, and I'm happy with that, that it would, well, be a good deal for the locals.
Right.
Therefore producing revenue.
Right. Yeah. No, we found, uh, good usage from locals. Um, and the, the thing that locals like is that they've now got a space downtown, which is great when you want to go to the coffee shop or, or do anything like that, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just took the whole spreadsheet offered to us by Idaho Springs and I really just manipulated the top figures, not the bottom. Cause I just needed the gross calculations. And so we would go back and, and if you wanted to do this, really go in and start to plug in and, and take out a lot of this stuff because it's Idaho Springs. But I really just wanted you to see how we calculated the revenue. And I think really tonight, we're, we're kind of looking for, you know, per our procurement, we can move forward with interstate parking. We can also do an RFP. Um, they are aware, both are on the table. But if there was interest in us, we would like to then engage to be able to really start to figure out what, what does this relationship with interstate parking look like? Um, and that's like, kind of one of the questions before you tonight is, do you give us that green light to engage to, to really bring back, um, our complete calculator and all the other things?
One more question for you, Gareth.
Sure.
It, um, this would have, we've got a lot of private lots here in town. I, I assume the same system could work for private lots and municipalities.
Yeah, no, it's worked out really well. So like in Breckenridge, we have almost 30 private locations now. We run the town and we also run the ski resort. Um, so you get the same experience. And the other thing that's great is you get to pull all the capacity together, right? So it's all communicating and it's all used to the best interests of the town. Um, so yeah, that's, that's worked out really, really well.
Great. Got my green light.
And that's not easy, Gareth.
Tanya and, uh, as you've seen, um, Tanya and Nicole, anything to add?
Nope, already, already said all things.
Tanya?
Uh, same. This sounds like a good one. We, I'm, I'm all for it.
I'm probably the only one against paid parking. You know, I just feel like good for, for reasons I am, but I'm totally outvoted. So, um, my big thing is taking care of locals.
Yeah, and we do that.
Billy, can you articulate the reasons why you're against it?
Uh, where to begin? We have too much to do tonight. Moving on.
But Billy.
Doesn't matter. It's a five to one, but I don't think I would sway. I mean, I, to me, it, it's just a combination. I feel like we've been a very uninviting town because of the lack of parking or blocked parking or, you know, you name it. And all of a sudden, we're going from no park, not enough parking to paid parking. And it just makes us seem uninviting. I also feel like things, you know, that paid parking is often, you know, um, a gateway drug to towns just going the wrong direction, you know? So, so, um, that is, um, yeah, a challenge I have, you know? It, it's one thing for us if we get in on the code and we, we look at private landowners to do it. But for the town to do it, I've, I've just, I'm not a fan.
I would invite you. Crested Butte is very inviting and so is Breck and so.
For skiing, not for paying for parking.
We like to always say it's managed parking and it's really about using the parking space to the best, best uses of the community and really controlling it. Um, and that's, uh, that's where we've had a lot of fun and had a lot of success.
And it's almost become an expectation, like.
To that I would push hard against because if you really look around, there's only three places in Boulder County to do, to do it that I can think of. And none in Grant County except the ski area and.
Right, in mountain town, in mountain town. It's become, I mean, an expectation. People kind of know and understand when you come to those areas.
Push against that too, yeah, yeah. I don't think that's accurate statement.
Well, what's the gateway drug? You know, reference that you made. That sounds like a leap of judgment there.
Um, I know I've lived out here a long time. I've seen a lot of mountain towns go very interesting directions. And that's always been one little canary.
Well, thanks for being the loyal opposition.
Yeah, I mean, that's my opinion. I'm confident I will not sway enough to change it.
Billy, what about the two hours free for locals?
I love that. That's where, you know, if we're going to do it, I want to put a lot of.
I mean, we still have time to discuss.
Two or more.
Details, right? Before, before we approve this as yes. Cause that, that's kind of where I'm leaning too. I mean, so anyway, but this is just a tentative, yes.
Essentially is what we're, we're, we're looking at tonight.
Yeah.
And we're not, we're not through the budget process even yet.
Right. Right. So I have any questions. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having us. We really appreciate it. We'd love to work with you guys. So it'd be a lot of fun.
Drive slow on your way home.
Cameras will be watching you, little brother.
All over the place. All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Onto the next. Wait, now what I'm sharing, so. Okay, uh, next we have another third party on with us. If you remember, last time we met with you, we brought you two IT providers. And just that we wanted to engage both. One is more cloud-based. The other was server-based and exploring both. The other company, Concentrix, did opt to pull out. Um, I think we had mentioned to you last time, we are super excited about All Mountain Technologies. Um, I think it's important to note though, that similar to interstate parking, we have yet to engage, right? We really need your green light saying, yes, go ahead and engage so that we can give you more realistic budgetary figures. Right now, we're really operating on just kind of some estimates of combination of All Mountain Technologies and Randy. So we're asking kind of for that green light. Um, just a reminder though of what happens here is there's, you know, of course a monthly fee, but we are interested in moving to cloud-based only, which is bringing on Office 365 and all of the, um, components that come with that. And so there is a transition cost that gets spread out over three years. We do have Pam Elliott on, president. I think Rita and I mentioned last time. Pam has been so helpful. Um, we're not even engaged yet and she's, she's willing to talk with us about all the different options. She has evaluated our internet, does feel that perhaps if we upgrade to 100, Pam's going to have to correct me here, 100 up, 100 down from the 30 up, 30 down we have now, this should be just fine. She's not concerned about our internet. Um, did, you know, obviously recommend, you know, we continue to pursue our own fiber, which we're doing under broadband. You know, of course, has some avenues that we could maybe do that, but, but does feel confident that she can serve us. She's evaluated kind of our, our computer setups and, and what we have. But we are looking to officially engage her so that we can do some more of this kind of hard, direct work. But Pam, would love to turn it over to you to just introduce yourself and maybe add anything else you'd like to add.
Hi, everybody. Pam Elliott, uh, you did a great job. Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, we want to get you in a easily supportable. You ironically have really good internet up there, better than where we are at. So I'd say we've leveraged that for sure. Um, so being able to work from anywhere at any time is kind of the key. And getting it up in the cloud, just, it's, it's just, it's easier to support.
So that's what we want to do. Um, and yeah, questions?
Uh, is it possible, are, are we able to get 100 up, 100 down service? That if we're going to do a cloud-based solution and, and that's the minimum required, can we actually get it?
Yeah, 100%. I have a quote from Lumen.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, they'll pull, you got fiber right outside the door. They just kind of pull it into the building.
And just a reminder, we're on BVSD's fiber. So we already pay for fiber, but we're just able to upgrade our services. Um, and I think that, that her customer service has been exceptional and we know, we're very confident that her team that we get to work with. And it's a group, right? It's not just one person. Um, although we'd love to just work with Pam, it's, it's, and she's got an incredible team. And that's, I think, what we're missing. We need the team support. We need just more robust IT and, and Pam can offer that to us under All Mountain Technologies.
This, uh, one for you, Miranda. This would be, we, we've been pretty much a, a Google shop in, in term, for almost everything we've used for tools. How do you feel about going over to Office 365?
I think a lot of our partners use Office 365. We're like not a part of the, the cool kids club. Um, I just, I think it would be incredible. I mean, we obviously know WebEx has its quirks, you know, just being able to move to Teams would be big. Having the ability to access our files anywhere. One of my concerns is not all of us are, are in front of their, are at our desks all the time. And so our files end up potentially on people's computers, on their desktops. So if those things crash, it's just, it's clunky right now, the server system. And, and we need the ability to work from anywhere at any point in time. And right now we have many limitations. And so, yes, there's a transition, but I would say we've got strong computer users. We've got strong support for one another, but most of us are interacting with Teams or Office 365 in some capacity with our third parties that we interact with, like JVA does it. Um, Fear and Peers has it, SE Group, all of them are using that. And so it'd be just nice to have that platform, um, for us. So I think most of us are very excited. The question became like, could we do this? And what I also appreciate about All Mountain Technologies is, you know, they're really willing to make it work financially for us. And this just brings us into such a better place as a, as an organization will be more efficient because we can have access in, in every, no matter where we are. And you as well, as, as board of trustees, I mean, you also will benefit from this.
One thing I've been just curious about, um, Andrew and Nikki Dunn and Miranda, um, just some of the, it seems like IT has maybe been a bit of an issue regards to how town shop, water and sewer have been able to function or the, the heat not working because their IT issues or IT issues with the controls of the, is this something that we can work out with a new contractor? Is this, you know?
I haven't gotten to the shop yet with Pam, but I feel like my, my, and so I can't put her on the spot, but I think my, my understanding and perception of All Mountain Technologies is it's like, whatever they have to do to make it work. And, and so I think, uh, you know, we, Rita mentioned it last time. We asked Pam like, you know, why do we think that maybe current IT providers are, are not moving to the cloud? And it's just a fear of the unknown. And so they're, this is their business. This is how they interact. And so, I mean, our expectation to help is that we improve in every facet. And again, we'll also be supported by a larger team to be able to assist Public Works when there's, when they're challenged instead of one person. And so thankful to Randy for all he's done for us to date. Just think we're moving into a, a different set of needs that we need a, a company like All Mountain Technologies.
Yeah, it should be, yeah, it'd just be good if the IT will let the controls of the HVAC system work at the time.
Oh, I guess we did, maybe we did a little bit, Pam, I don't remember if we talked about it, but yeah, our HVAC system at Public Works is hooked to internet. And there were some issues trying, like releasing some controls to a third party so they could work on our internet.
Oh, yeah, yes. We, we do a lot of Vale Resorts Control Networks. We do other cities control networks. I'm very familiar with that scenario. Uh, yes, I have, we have processes and procedures. So people, the third party calls in and we can actually watch that person work. And when he's done, we kick him out and he's done. So, uh, we have that ability without a doubt, in a secure ability. So, uh, we have that ability without a doubt, in a secure ability, yes.
Great.
Thanks for doing your homework.
Yeah.
You need anything else from us, Miranda, or, or any questions?
A bit of a nod of four to officially engage All Mountain Technology so we can come back to you with actual financial figures because we will have officially engaged with them.
Not.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole and.
Nicole and Tanya, what's your thoughts? I don't think I.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm for it, thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Nicole.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks Pam.
Thanks Pam.
We'll see you in the cloud.
Right, we're, we're big Pam fans. All right, let's keep going, our last third party, Mike, thanks for hanging on for, with us for so long. Um, you asked us to add into the budget the 10,000 for a membership fee for working, um, kind of doing all long, long-term supports with, um, the Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence Group. And I have Mike on tonight to answer any questions you might have. Um, as a reminder, this is supports for helping to execute our strategic plan, for helping us to develop mission visions and values, and just making sure that we're really focused as an organization on performance. And so I'd love to turn it over to Mike to speak a little bit more about those supports. Um, Mike has had an opportunity to look at our strategic plan, um, and has, and has been watching all night. So, Mike, if you're still there.
I, I am, I, hopefully you're seeing me now, I think I turned everything back on. Um, thank you for having me, uh, yeah, so Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence is a nonprofit. Uh, we've served the states of Colorado, excuse me, Montana, Wyoming and Nebraska. And our goal is really to work with organizations to, to do what I think of as just make work better. So every organization today is challenged to do more with less. And our goal is to create a community where organizations can learn from each other. We always like to say that there's no problem any organization faces that's truly unique, uh, a truly unique problem, it's just unique to that particular organization. And so we, um, we facilitate the building of community by bringing organizations like the town of Nederland together with, we work with the city of Fort Collins, I think I saw on that slide. City of Fort Collins is a national recipient of the Malcolm Baldrige National Quality Award, but we also work with cities like Steamboat Springs, Sheridan, Wyoming, a lot of other government, Adams County, High Plains Library District, uh, education nonprofits, we work in all different sectors. Again, with the idea that, um, the core functions of an organization are leadership, strategy, customers, workforce, knowledge management and operations. And how you do those is oftentimes a, a learning exercise between organizations. So I, I have taken a look at your strategic planning, kudos for having a plan, I love the objectives, I love the action plans you've got inside here. And I welcome your questions on how we might be able to help the town.
So I'm intrigued by it, I mean, it was two weeks ago and I just really want to hear from the town staff as to what, I mean, I, I worked before, I, I worked with the town of Fort Collins with my old, old job. And, um, you know, we're consultants for them, but just, yeah, that's Cindy is doing some things right for sure. So I'm just kind of curious how you feel like this.
Like you're gonna put all of them on the spot because I haven't fully, I've, I've led this on my own in many ways. And so I think that for me, the reason I'm bringing it forward is just recognizing that completing the strategic plan was a huge first step. But we're always gonna need support and capacity and how do we realize these strategic plans? How do we ensure everything we do is tied to a mission, vision and values? And this to me just feels like an incredible support system for us. Of course, we have you all, but it'd be nice to turn to this organization, you know, as, as we seek to execute these plans, you know, as we look to navigate new projects and priorities, how do they really all line up? And so this is to me like a third party, someone we can bounce ideas off of, talk through and really provide that guidance. I think we're all stuck in the day to day. And I would also love to train the department heads as leaders to really be thinking on more of that visionary level. I mean, so many of us just get really ingrained in how to just do our job, that we don't often have the capacity or the personnel to support us in looking at that large scale planning. And this is an opportunity also to train all of the department heads to be more strategic thinkers as they move forward, because we have subject matter experts like Mike and his team to, to do all that work.
Uh, this is Tanya, I have a question, um, given the amount of staff turnover we have in the town of Nederland, um, how would this benefit future, uh, heads of departments? That, you know, that might be here in two years, would it be a benefit to them?
Maybe I'll answer and then turn it over to Mike, yeah, I mean, Mike and I talked about the newness of the team. And also maybe recognize there's that value is these are incredible department heads and many of them are new to, to maybe this level of leadership or this type of leadership, being in a governmental entity and, and, you know, creating the framework for new management. I don't want any of them to go anywhere, but for new management to step in and step into an organization that has a mission, vision and values, like Netherlands should and it doesn't. And so how do we then train new leaders from day one to get kind of rallied behind that mission, vision and values? And so embedding this into our leadership culture, our staff culture, I think will go a long way in training people to understand what it means to work for the town of Nederland, what kind of our expectations are and how we move forward as an organization under just kind of united front through mission, vision, values, strategic planning. But Mike, I'll let you add in your thoughts.
Yeah, well, it certainly all starts with mission, vision and values. But so much of this is, uh, is about having, um, processes that people feel like they can really thrive inside of, right? People don't go to work with the idea that they're gonna go in and have a bad day, but we send people to work and put them inside bad processes and they go home having had a bad day. And so much of this is about understanding how your work gets done. And it's, it's what I think of as making work visible. So it, it, we, we work through a whole series of questions around how you do your work and try to help people understand how that work gets done. And what we're looking for is, is there actually an approach? Can you actually identify a process and how things get done? And I always tell folks, there isn't anything I'm gonna ask you that you don't already do, but how you do it isn't necessarily visible to the organization. And because it's not visible, it's hard then to analyze it. And if you can't analyze it, you can't improve it. And that's where people end up having a bad day. So we're looking for those approaches and then we're looking at how well they're deployed. Cause oftentimes an approach might exist, but it's deployed differently in different areas of the organization. And so you're trying to unite and know that that deployment, especially something like a strategic plan, it's great to have a plan, but the key to the plan is not creating the plan, it's deploying it. And that deployment can be really challenging. And so we talk about what does it mean to have a good approach? What does it mean to actually have a well-deployed plan? And the, and then we talk about things like learning and integration. The key to the future is to become a learning organization. Every organization in the last four years has undergone such stress because of COVID and other, other things that have gone on and all the changes going on. Maybe some of those are contributing to why you're having the high turnover. Becoming a learning organization is the key to the future. The only constant is change, right? Everything I've heard tonight on, on this call is around all the changes that you guys are trying to deal with as a town. And that change is not gonna get slower and it's not gonna get any less. And so becoming a learning organization is a key part of that. And that's, again, part of what we try to instill in you. Um, as people move up and move into leadership roles, we have ways of, of creating opportunities for them to learn from others so that they're not, you know, reinventing the wheel. And they're learning from somebody else that's doing a similar role in a similar, uh, uh, community or another, uh, um, entity that has similar roles to them. A, a, again, I can't over emphasize that these ideas of leadership and strategy and customer and so forth, these, we, we call them categories, they're the same for every organization regardless of where you are. And so there is a tremendous ability to learn from each other.
I have a question for Miranda. I guess, I don't want to deny town staff this support, right? Like, I can tell you want the support and to say, you know, no, seems a bit cruel. However, the budget is looking pretty rough for this year. So I'm wondering, what is your pitch for doing this this year, rather than waiting until we've stabilized a bit? And we come back with a maybe more balanced budget next year where we can add something like this in?
I think the reason I'm bringing this forward to you now is, to me, the strategic plan was an opportunity to stabilize, but needing the strong leadership and support behind it. I guess it goes back to continued investment in staff, continued investment in this leadership structure, continued investment in this culture. I mean, there's a lot on that strategic plan that's being asked of us. And how incredible would it be to have an organization to help guide us to success? I mean, we've, we've committed to a lot and having that support as we navigate the strategic plan is why I'm looking for it now. I feel like waiting does a disservice. This is the first year we've ever had a strategic plan. Let's utilize a company that executes strategic plans to help us be successful. Cause I don't want to reach the end of the year where we're just wondering how we, we maybe got off track and we didn't accomplish some of these goals. But we're going to need the support and being teamed up with an organization like this, I think will help us make that a reality. Whereas if we wait, it's like, you're still again, putting the, the same pressure and strain on staff to make this happen without all the resources, the, the leadership and cultural supports that are needed to make this a good strategic plan.
I see, so it's our fault?
Yeah. I mean, I just, I think that, you know, goes back to investing. I mean, you, you have an incredible department and division head group. These department heads in this room are trying to do everything that they can. And I would love to surround them with all the best tools to be successful. And I think that's what we've been missing, because we've just been grinding day in and day out, that we haven't been able to really elevate this leadership group to the level I'd like to get them to. And I think this is the year to do it, as they're leading their teams and they're navigating the strategic plan. This is a time to utilize this resource to invest in their success.
It's a good pitch, it's a good pitch.
Mike, a question for you. What are, uh, three to five things that you've done in Fort Collins that moved the needle and got them to this point?
So Fort Collins was a national recipient before I came to Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence. So I'm not gonna take credit for any of their success. But I would tell you that if you wanted to talk to Steamboat Springs, uh, Steamboat Springs has been a part of Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence. Now they're entering their third year and we've worked hand in hand for the last three years. And interestingly enough, they're actually just completing their very first strategic plan. So when we started with them and, uh, they had no strategic planning process, they had a budgeting process and they're just now working through it and we're into the deployment of that. And we're working through things like understanding capability and capacity. And I heard you guys talking about, uh, capacity tonight. So do we have the capability, do we have the capacity, do we have the resources to be able to actually deploy that plan? They're also looking at things like leadership communication and how it flows throughout the entire city to make sure that, uh, when they communicate how this plan needs to be done, that it's gonna be as successful, as successful as possible at all levels within the organization. They've also worked on customer listening. And so how do they engage with customers, uh, to identify, um, what customer needs are? And are they responding to them? And so they put together a, a pilot project on all of the customer inquiries that come in for the, uh, in their case, the city council and how they respond to those. Um, they're looking at, um, knowledge management systems. So that they've got actually five different projects that they've taken on. As a result, we've done, uh, the work we've done with REMPEX, independent of just their strategic plan, just to try and make sure that they are, um, coming together as a city and starting to think more as a city rather than as departments. I always tell folks that one of the challenges in government is that you have such a broader range, uh, uh, array of services that you provide. And the challenge is that from a citizen's perspective, it's one city, but from the city's perspective, it's a lot of different departments. And trying to get a, a unified approach that says, no, we actually work, we actually talk, we actually plan as a city, not as a department, is a big shift in thinking. And that's probably the biggest thing, I think Steamboat would tell you that they've worked on. I was on earlier today with the city of Sheridan, working on the very same thing. They've got their very first strategic plan, trying to work through a whole list of objectives and action plans and trying to figure out how they prioritize, how are they gonna make these things successful? And so these are all pretty standard conversations. We have a lot of organizations and you guys are right at that same point.
It, it sounds to me like, I, I was trying to get my head around what, what it is you're selling, but it's largely, if I hear you right, Brandon, it's a training, uh, skills upgrade for your team.
Right, and, and this is, and to me, this is training, you know, obviously it's a, it's a one membership fee, but the training that would come to our staff, which is, we've sent them all through later, leadership training and some are great and some are horrible, right? It's like, it's all over the board. And, and I just, it, it, to me, it's, this is training that's embedded in our organization. It's not just sending these leaders out to go get a training to how to better work with your team. It's like this, Mike and his team will understand Netherlands and how to work with Netherlands and Netherlands dynamic, both internally and externally with our customers. I mean, I think we're always striving to, to perform better. And I'd love to have a third party provide guidance because we get so stuck in the weeds. It really would be great to have a third party to say, you know, here are your opportunities for, for improvement so that public engagement can get that much stronger, or that we're working in a very cohesive manner. We've got the right leaders, now is the time to invest further into that leadership. And I think having an organization that is kind of embedded into Netherlands is a better way to do that than to send these leaders to these one-off leadership and strategic planning sessions.
Ballpark, what have, what have we spent on studies this year that we're gonna have to carry out in the strategy? Uh, roughly a million dollars total between the six things we're working on?
I mean, hmm, all of our different studies. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up there, you mean, even your transportation and your, your comp plan, that's 400,000.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, yeah, th- then the trick is, how do you avoid it going into the drawer and you forget about it? It, we, we've got a, we've got buckets of those now.
Right, and again, I think this, this leadership team is great and I want to see that we continue to invest in their long-term success and their focus as more elevated leaders. I mean, they are doing an incredible job leading the day-to-day operations. And we, I think as a whole, want to make sure we're performing maybe on, on a higher level where we're looking at the future and we stop just getting so ingrained in day-to-day. But letting these six plus our division heads just be more strategic in our approach. And I just think, you know, to Tanya's point, we've seen turnover, I hope no one leaves. You know, I think that, that there's a commitment, you, these people are in the room with you. I mean, that's, there's the demonstrated commitment, let's invest in their overall success. And I think this organization does it, again, going back to, because they'll understand Netherlands and it's not just these like, go to this leadership training and tell us what you learned. They, this is a much more in-depth service and support than any other training I think can provide us.
You sound a lot more sold this week than last time.
Yeah.
Miranda, can I, can I add one thing, because I just want to echo what you were, you were sharing about personal development. I think one of the biggest challenges organizations face today is, yes, you do invest a lot in people and you do invest a lot in personal development. But we have to be able to move organizations from individual learning to organizational learning. It's, it's how do we develop as an organization? And that's an, an area of learning that is greatly underappreciated in all the personal development and training programs, uh, across the country. Some of the other organizations we've worked with that you may know are Elevations Credit Union, for example, is another part of, of Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence. They're a two-time national recipient of the Malcolm Baldrige Award. And, and having the opportunity to engage with them and talk about how they do strategic planning, how they actually deploy things inside their organization, how they train leaders, those are opportunities that we create for every organization that works with us as well. It's not just about having you engage with other communities and other, uh, city governments, but also engaging with organizations, maybe in healthcare, Donor Alliance is another national recipient. We're very fortunate to have six national recipients on our Board of Directors and they are very focused on, on, um, driving a user experience, trying to help organizations get started in what we call this area of performance excellence.
Yeah, and, and in general, in my experience of dealing with performance consultants is that it's a very nebulous field, it's kind of a morass. But what has made me less wary of this particular consultancy is that it is regional, it is a nonprofit. It's worked with communities that are similar to ours. It makes me a lot more comfortable, uh, providing staff with this resource.
Yeah, I was in, in that Civic University, I sat next to the controller from Sheridan who raved about it.
Any more questions, um, Tanya or Nicole?
Um, I don't necessarily have a question, um, but I would say that, you know, the budget is going to be tight if it moves forward and we do not have the cameras as part of that budget, then it's gonna look even worse. If it moves forward and we do not have the cameras as part of that budget, then it's going to look even worse. And so then, you know, justifying the 10,000 and I get it. I have the HR background. I've done organizational development and I've done exactly the training. But you know, this person, you know, that you're talking about, um, Mike. And yet, you know, when it comes down to whether, you know, how much of a deficit we're going to take, that's all things that we have to take into consideration. Um, so there's the finance person in me that says, we gotta cut it off at some point. We gotta cut off the additional spending at some point. So where do we do that? You know, part of coming up with a viable strategic plan and something that's doable is exactly what we did. We come up with something that's doable. Um, that's why we went to all the, the heads and we asked what's doable. Um, and yes, we have to continue to iterate on the strategic plan. We have to continue to build it out. And I would go back to asking that question, why now? Why is it so important now? And can it wait for all these plans to come to fruition at the end of next year? All these plans come together. I think that's when we're going to need some of the more critical strategic planning, rather than in this budget, in this budget season. But that's just my opinion.
Perhaps I can, you know, and I understand. I think we, we recognize that you're going to have to make a decision about this. I guess I go back to the why. It's, I would rather go into 2025 with the leadership that has all the skills to execute those plans and not have the plans done. And then try to create the training and the support and all of those things for that team. I would argue this is the year to invest in them being more excelled leaders at strategic planning implementation because it's about to get real when we have all of these plans come to a head and now it's time to execute in 2025. I just, I'm not sure. To me, I just, I don't understand why we would try to invest at the same time. You also want us to execute yet a new level of strategies. Like this feels like the time where we would want to look at training our leadership up to be prepared to hit the ground running. Because right now we're, we're stabilizing, right? So to me, this is a year of stabilization. Train our leadership up and we're going to be incredible going into 2025 if the investment is made now.
So, okay, if, if that's the argument, then there's already existing training budgets that are put into each of the departments. Can those training budgets help cover this?
Those are for their staff. I mean, I, I rarely do your, does your leadership team here pull from their own respective training budgets? That is really for direct level staff and it's typically about $2,000 a budget. So, so sure, but I would say that's not a great idea. We want to send streets to various heavy equipment training. We want to send parks to parks and, and playground equipment training. We want to send utilities to, you know, their, their different certification trainings. I wouldn't want to see that being taken away. But often it's this leadership team that's not going to the trainings. We, we try to, but rarely are we because we want to make sure that we're reserving our budgets for the direct skillset training that those training budgets offer.
And if you, go ahead.
I was just going to say like, uh, you know, I guess to me it's like this is 10,000, obviously coming out of admin. It could get sprinkled out amongst the different funds, but then it's, you know, it's a thousand dollars. We could increase each training line item by a thousand dollars to cover this cost and then just earmark it towards this. That is an option, but it, it would just take the $10,000 and, and just be distributed. Like to me, it makes no difference. I might as well just put it all in one, one line item versus spreading it out, but it is option. But I guess that's, that's one of my concerns is because we dedicate and we should rightfully dedicate our whole training budget to our direct staff to make sure they're as skilled as possible. What about this leadership group? What are we doing to invest in this upper leadership group? Who needs a different level of training than how to run heavy equipment? They need true, and not even just how to be a leader. I mean, these are leaders. They all got promoted for a reason. They are leaders. How do we then transform them into strategic planners and, and being the ones who can truly execute plans and thinking on a much larger scale? And I think we do in moments, but we've never really been given the opportunity or training to operate on that level.
Miranda, this is Tanya. In a, in like a nutshell, what are you, what is this training? Is it like an actual training that you guys are going to? Or is it just like you get to phone a friend when you have a question? I'm just still a little like not understanding.
Yeah, it's ongoing support. It's not a specific training. I guess that's why I view this a little bit different than a training budget because it's ongoing support. It's working through our strategic plan. It's working on our mission, vision and values.
What does that mean? They, they come up here and they sit with you and talk about your plan or is it on the phone or what?
We, we do monthly sessions and we do, uh, monthly sessions. We, we form a steering committee. So that's the leadership of the leadership, if you will. Uh, and then some committees, uh, are teams around the various category areas to be able to work on the category activities. But it's monthly online sessions. I facilitate the sessions, but then I also facilitate. If there's a roadblock that, that town has encountered, let's say you're trying to deploy something in the strategic plan you've never done before. I don't act as the consultant. I act as the facilitator. I go out and find other folks that have dealt with that, that are in our world. Uh, and, and sometimes even from outside our world, we involve the city of Henderson, Nevada, Germantown, Tennessee. I've had, uh, uh, cities from all across the country that have participated in panel discussions. But we'll put together a panel discussion on any topic that a city might be facing that gives them a chance just to fire questions and say, how did you do this? And how did you approach that? And how did you get started when you did that? And so on and so forth. So the Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence, because we're nonprofit, we can't actually consult. We facilitate creating community. So we help you identify the challenge that you face and then figure out resources that you can tap into to learn about those challenges, to speed up your, uh, your, your learning, if you will. Your, um, your ability to actually improve those processes that you're doing. And, um, excuse me, and execute more effectively as an organization.
Okay. Thank you. Um, my issue is that the strategic plan, as it's written, has just, it's more like finishing things up that they've been working on. And I don't necessarily, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, I just don't know how much consulting is required on that. But Miranda obviously thinks we, they do. I'm of the notion that now that we need to be cutting the budget as much as possible since we're not balancing it. It's not sustainable what we got going on. We're coming up with every which way to fee and fine our residents in order to pay for our budget. So I'm just, if we had the money, I'd mull for it, but we don't. And so I just, I mean, I understand it's only $10,000 to drop in the bucket of the budget. So I'm not going to stop it if everybody else wants it, but I'm also thinking it's not the time.
There's, uh, there's also, yeah, understand that there's mission, vision and values work to be done. And yes, that helps inform where you're headed and how to do the work. And we've, we've gotten to a point where we've been operating without those things, um, to this day. I, what, what I'm struggling with is work around mission, vision and values is going to bridge the gap in execution. What we need from an execution standpoint is prioritization, saying no to things and making sure that the things that won't work beyond are the things that are on the strategic plan. I'm having a bit of a disconnect in the proposal of mission, vision, values when what we need are strong tactics around execution. So that's my piece.
What are your thoughts on that, Miranda?
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm advocating for this, right? Ultimately, this is your decision. You know, I, I understand the concerns. I also believe strongly in investing in this team. I, I like the framework that this organization offers. So to me, I think this is worth it, but if, if you don't, then you don't, I guess. You know, I guess that's, I, I don't really have much more to add. I feel like I've, I've advocated to the best of viability and, and I respect whatever decision the board makes.
And
Jesse? Oh, Jesse was.
Yeah, just. Sorry, can I go?
Jesse's going now. Oh, Nicole's going now. Go ahead, Nicole, finish up.
Okay. Um, and in the end, there's got to be a decision made. And if I were to make a decision off a priority, it's getting folks their salaries to minimum. That's my highest priority. And if we have to cut in other areas with the intention to bring this back in 2025 budget, absolutely 100%. It's unfortunate, like we have to make those hard decisions on where to hit pause. Again, $10,000 may not be like a whole lot of money, but 10,000 here, 10,000 there, 30,000 here, it's adding up, right? And so, um, especially if we cut some of the revenue sources, so it's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, I'm generally in favor of this item. And, um, I do appreciate, uh, the nature of a budget where we have to balance and balance priorities and, um, you know, maybe this gets cut down the road, but I'd like to keep it in for as long as we can. And I don't see any overly compelling need to, to cut it from the conversation just yet. Some of the reasons why I'm in favor, you know, investing in our people, taking good care of our people is our number one objective and our strategic goals at the moment. I personally have gotten a lot of value out of working with, um, consultants, coaches, um, you know, education mentors, uh, leadership training. And, you know, having somebody who's highly qualified with these kinds of, um, the portfolio and the, the, the experience and track record to come in and help our town and our staff. I feel like investing in our people and their ongoing growth and development is, is valuable. And, um, worthy of our support. And I feel like we can find ways to still make this budget work.
I agree with what Jesse just said. I've paid, um, or, or my career, a lot out of my own pocket for training like this and support. And, and some of it turned out to be not, were not worth much, but some of it moved the needle in a major way. I think you went through that with your business. One, uh, one question with the, this is to Rita. With the proposition HH going down tonight, uh, what's that bring? That brings, what does that bring into our general fund that we weren't anticipating if it had passed?
Sorry to say nothing.
Okay.
It has not changed.
Okay. So, and I, I think I would tend to leave it in. This is, we're going to go through multiple stages and have to tune this. If this round, I'd leave it in.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to both Tanya and Nicole's concerns. They're, they are my concerns as well, but I'd keep it in at this stage.
And, and I, I think we should keep it in at this stage for sure. You know, I'm actually a big fan of it. So I think it's a small investment with a big payoff. And now is the stabilization doesn't just mean sitting still. It means grow, it means develop, it means incubating too.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Well, thank you for the time and I am, yeah, let me know if you have additional questions and I'll be happy to respond.
Much appreciated. Thanks.
Be in touch. Oh, I'm going to rearrange some slides because you have fellow individuals from the DDA who have been sitting here for a while. So thank you to them. Um, just making sure you're not doing a break or anything. Okay, keep rolling. Um, I'll just do a quick overview of what the DDA discussed. And then there are members of the DDA to primarily answer wayfinding questions, but they did, they provided some incredible. I hope you had a chance to look at, um, the additional documentation we put into the packet that Steve Carell pulled together. I think it helps tremendously, but just really quick, running through it. You asked for a breakdown of the 60,000 for beautification. That is two part-time temp employees at 40 hours per week for 12 weeks. It's important to note that we've only budgeted for one temp employee. Nikki is asking for three. So this is the DDA helping to supplement the other three or the other two. And then the remaining 38,000 and some change will be for Judy and beautification. There is a 400,000 from wayfinding. Again, in this, uh, packet is a lot of information, but Steve Crowe and Steve Roundtree are here to answer your questions. They are part of the wayfinding subcommittee. You asked the DDA to consider increasing their budget to look at rehabbing the performance space. And then they are not moving forward with that. So the estimate from the opinion of probable cost from JVA was 75 to 100,000. The DDA really feels like that's not the, the right move at this time because they haven't even formally committed that space for the performance space. So, you know, just felt like it was premature to rehab that. So they are not moving forward with increasing that budget. They'd like to hold it at 50,000. And as a reminder, that's really to do, um, a portable stage and really test out how the summer concert series works. You asked for clarification on the 20,000 that was originally just said parking plan. It's for parking plan implementation. So in the multi-modal transportation plan, one of the end results will be identifying where to develop parking. And then the DDA has agreed $20,000 to help make whatever the top priority is happen. And then the last thing is they did continue to budget. We, you asked us to bring back the part, pay parking implementation. There is no cost if you go with interstate parking, but they did opt to leave it in there just in case we later maybe choose to go with a different vendor where we'd have to pay an upfront fee. So that is currently in their budget for paid parking. I don't know if you'd like to hear from the wayfinding group, but they're here. Steve, come on up.
Hello, hello? Yeah, we don't really have anything to present. You know, I feel like what we put in the packet was pretty self-explanatory to, based on the question that came from the BOT. Um, but we, we wanted to be here to support you guys and clear up any questions that you might have.
I think, you know, I, I listened in on that meeting, that special meeting y'all had. And, and, um, it seems like the one thing was like, oh, it just seemed like so much, you know, such a big amount of money total. And then I just know that part of what you did is you looked at numbers you had from before. You paid attention to the fact that everything's more expensive right now in any kind of construction or project or groceries or whatever. And so you did some rounding up to come to a number so that you wouldn't basically have to come back and say, oh, we didn't have enough budgeted, right? So can you speak to that maybe more in depth?
Yes. Um, so as, as mentioned in the packet, the numbers, the, um, figures are based on, uh, July. I think, is that? I've forgotten the exact date, but, um, yeah, from July of 2023, Merge, uh, our consultant, that was his best estimates for the various signs that we had chosen. And then, like you said, Billy, from there, we, um, uh, added on some in our original budget meeting in order to account for inflation and all, because we realized that these won't be bid on and fabricated really probably until early 2024. And just knowing how, especially in construction, but so many areas are, uh, prices are going up. And then what happened is, uh, so, so that had bumped it up originally at our first budget meeting. And then at the last budget meeting we had, uh, before we presented it to the Board of Trustees, um, we had a long discussion and decided to, um, raise it to the 400,000. I, I'm just going off memory, but I think it was at 350 before that. And, um, after a long discussion, we decided to go to 400. And it was, it was, as you said, so that we wouldn't have to be in the middle of the project or getting, uh, bids back and then having to come back to the BOT to get a supplementary budget. And, you know, and part of that is that we feel really strongly, I think Steve and I have worked a lot. I've been working on it for four years, but Steve and I have been working for over a year together and put in, you know, probably over a hundred hours on what we think is important for wayfinding. And so we didn't want to have to trim back, you know, what our, our holistic plan for the town is, um, if it came to that. So that's how we So that's how we bumped it up. And, yeah, so I guess any more questions on that, I'd be happy to explain.
Trustees?
I mean, I just want to say thanks for doing all this work. I think having this information in a public budget work session was really important. I think, you know, having all this, all this data to look instead of just a a single line item that says $400,000 for 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 signs, right? Uh, but seeing what that actually means, I think is really helpful and helps clarify to every us and the community at large what actually is going on and what's going into this. So thank you guys so much. And just wash the spelling on Chappeta Park.
I, I did see that.
Not from us or from Merge?
Probably from Merge, yeah.
I can't even spell Merge right.
There's just one other thing I'd like to mention, just in terms of the amount of money. I think from the beginning, you know, going back four years, I think the whole DDA's philosophy about wayfinding has been, it's not just more signs for town and all that. It's really, the goal of it is essentially to, and and I've heard this for five years that I've been in in town on the board, um, that we want to capture tourists coming through town. We know we have whatever, like a million people coming through town. And we hear over and over that so many of them can't find parking or can't figure out what's going on First Street and, you know, look down and see it's full and then head down to Boulder or up to Estes and just know that they can, you know, spend their money there pretty easily. So I think wayfinding really, as far as I can tell, you know, the board is, uh, feels that it's really important to capture tourists coming through town, get them to the parking spaces. And you'll see if you look through the sign types, that once they land at a parking space, then we have a a fair amount of investment in kiosks that will direct them out to walking paths because we really want to get people out on their feet. And we have some business directory signs there on First Street in the budget that will really just kind of give them the information they need about goods and services in town with the intent that that will increase sales revenue and sales tax revenue over time. So I do think that's, you know, it's, it's not unrealistic to think that this, even if we did spend 400,000, that that money, you know, in going on year after year will be coming back to the town at a greater rate because of capturing tourists and having to spend money here.
I like to see the DDA do, you know, spend money on something physical, like a real capital improvement in this falls in that category. And and it does last a while. And I I guess I do have a question on like, you know, new businesses coming in and and leaving, you know, and leaving and then um, just how do you edit it as you go along, you know, with with more or less businesses, more or less things to point people towards?
Yeah, good question. And that has been top of mind a lot on these signs, you know, to make them flexible. And, um, and by the way, we're not going with any, we don't plan to go with anything digital or electric in our, you know, community here. But we want them to be very relatively inexpensive to adjust. For example, if you, I don't know if anyone had a chance to see the sign types, but on First Street, on both ends of First Street, there would be these business directory signs and they just have a placard, a very simple placard that could be just, you know, unscrewed. Uh, I'm not familiar with the exact fabrication yet. We haven't gotten there. But, you know, with the plan all along was to make those very easy. So that will be like as far as businesses, because we all know businesses come and go all too frequently here in town. So I guess if that answers your question.
Yeah, it it does, yeah. Thanks.
Sure.
I mean, the other thing, I mean, I'm, I'm a big believer in speaking into the air to make things happen. And I think it's the same with a sign. If you go into the middle of an abandoned field and you put a sign there that says Albuquerque this way, you can be sure that a road is going to be built from there to Albuquerque, right? At some point in the future. And sometimes just pointing in the direction can lead to infrastructural improvements that'll make the town better.
Um, hi, Steve. This is Tanya. Um, thanks so much for all the work you and Steve have been doing. I'm curious, where did you get these estimates for the cost of the signs? They seem to vary from, you know, under 1,000 to $14,000. What, who, who is making the signs? Is there going to be an RFP for this where the price could actually be a lot cheaper? Or is this already like a contract?
Uh, yeah, good question. Um, these came from Merge and they, you know, they work all over the country with municipalities like this. And they've worked with sign fabricators for a long time. So it's their best guess or estimate on costing as of July 2023. And Tanya, if you were able to see those, the pictures, there was like a four page PDF. And you can see the the great variance in complexity and size of different signs.
Well, they're not very complex. They're just holes with a sign on it. Some have three signs, some have two, some have one.
Okay, and then, okay, uh, that's true for some of the signs, but there's the kiosks and the, you know, business directory sign. I wouldn't call it complicated, but it's.
The kiosk, sure. Uh, that that's more complicated. It's got some stone.
And the informational signs, uh, which are going to be like triangular. Um, so anyway, there's that, that accounts for all the different pricing. But to answer your question more succinctly, Merge was the one who came up with these. And, uh, also there is no contractor yet. We're getting to that stage now. That's what we're headed into is putting out an RFP, which will create and then bring back to the board, uh, for approval before we put it out for sign fabricators and installers. So that most likely those are two different contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Nicole?
I, I don't have anything to add. No, thanks for the work.
Any other questions for Steve and Steve? Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah. Do you guys want to take a five minute break? Or just break yourselves and keep going? I think, yeah, I'm more for keeping going. Randy, you should take a break if you need one.
Did, did we skip over a lot of stuff?
Yeah, we, we, we sequence things. You may never heard that. We just, we did, we did. It's because these guys have been hanging out here since seven o'clock. So now they can.
Oh, yeah, that's smart. Awesome. Thanks.
So, Miranda, do you want to go back to C-Safe or, or, um, do you need, do you need anything else from us on wayfinding?
No, no.
Okay, so I make sure we were.
Nope. No, we'll go back to C-Safe, EV charger, short-term rental, sustainability and permit fee. And then we'll get into, we'll get into the real budget. Um, yeah. Nothing on the performance space. I think we're good.
Thanks for, thanks, Steve, Steve and Andrew. Appreciate it.
Do you guys want to move that? I mean, I feel like all of us are at the same. Do you want to move it? Do you have a time to talk about it? Just get it done. Get it done.
That's, that's a good point. So Miranda did have to take a quick break, so we'll pick it up as soon as she walks back in. Thanks, everyone online.
Well, it doesn't, the refunds will pick up. Um, we're on, we're projected next year, yeah, it's $2,000, something back. And that's for, sure, and that's for the. Yeah, but the taxes, uh, the property taxes, they're outrageous, especially if you have multiple properties. Basically, it's going to be, sure, they're definitely coming in right now. Putting tax on short term. Six, seven percent.
Twenty seven?
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, I don't, he doesn't, I mean, people are all those events. But, um, I don't think it should possibly happen, but I, I thought H additional smart age. I, I don't, I don't think anybody was able to explain.
Smart, right?
Over the quarter, but even. Had a hard time, so I'm getting the budget application.
I watched, I watched or listened to a whole approval. Now's a good explanation. Jay definitely run a, uh.
I read about Luca. Um, I voted for it. I just heard it tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, Brad, uh, those, if anyone. Or I, I, I heard that afterwards and God, God damn it, I probably missed that. Yes.
I didn't know that.
I just think, oh, yeah, uh, I couldn't understand it since long time ago.
All right.
Peter, I think people are so much accustomed to, uh, her brother. So, but you gotta, the governor, I don't know where he distributed it, it's pretty good, it was called sort of.
Yes, no, it's not, no, it's. Yeah, well, he's took the gun. I thought this one wasn't their gun. The last one, the 123, no one took it.
Yeah, 120. Oh, the 123 was the, the state authority or a local.
Oh, yeah, that was, yeah, you're right. That was 230, 20, 2023 dash 23.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, he still seems like that one, but, um.
But he keeps talking about wanting to do another 13. Um, on the housing front, uh, yeah, we're gonna have to make some changes, but I don't, I don't hear him communicating real well. I think in this, I think, by the way, it's a proper replacement. Uh, but it's not solid. By the time this comes to vote, I think essentially this, you know, all the organizations like Dr. Fogg and hardly, they're in or out, no.
I heard this coworker works in, was in California. She was talking about Prop 13, they voted it. That's really off of them. I'd like to know the difference is, because I thought it was.
Are we though? Are we?
Not really. No, it's way more complicated than that. It's almost impossible. Lady, I stopped talking to Sharon.
Yeah.
Didn't understand it.
All right, so now it's just us. The audience has left. You're stuck with me and Rita for the rest of this. Rita, you want to do C?
And the folks online.
There's no online, yes, but there are no more consultants in the room. We've got a member of the community. Thank you for holding strong with us. Rita, do you want to do C-Safe?
Yep. So earlier in the year, the town invested a million into the core fund and 500,000 into the cash fund with C-Safe. That has earned us $49,000 in interest so far as of October. So per request from the last budget session, we have included estimates for interest earned in 2024 by potentially adding another $1 million into the core fund. So just wanted you all to know when we do get into numbers, I did include as if we were to, um, invest another $1 million.
Okay.
Okay. That was it?
So last time, this is just more of informational. Last time we brought to you, um, EV fees for EV chargers, we originally said a dollar per hour. You said $5 per hour for fast chargers, so we went back. And we were actually able to pull some historical data before we kind of lost charge point. We were able to go back and grab some historical data. So what we've determined is that we put into the budget an approximate revenue of $30,000 from all the chargers. So of course we'll have all year long level twos at a dollar per hour. And then we've got the $5 per hour for the level, for the fast chargers that is probably only half the year because those won't go in until about April or May. So this is just more of an FYI of there's revenue and we've actually budgeted for, originally we thought, oh, let's just see what revenue comes in. We've actually budgeted it, and so it is in the budgetary figures. This is revenue, so no one can be questioning it.
Question on that, I thought, I thought we bought four units. We only bought two.
Two dual port, though.
Uh, on the fast charger.
Fast charger is just one, but dual port.
That's all we got.
That's all we have.
And we paid 60 grand for it?
Yes, and we'll get $50,000 back.
I like that. Okay.
So we're out of pocket 15. All right.
Who, who do we get to 50 for a month?
Um, charge ahead Colorado.
Cool.
We applied for it a long time ago and we've just been waiting. They won't reimburse us until we install and start to give them data.
Awesome.
So, short-term rental regulatory fee. You asked us to go back and do some calculations based on, um, kind of the same model Teller you're, I'd reuse is. So what we believe is that the, there is a potential revenue here of 27,840. So what that is, is 25% of the clerk's salary, since we determined that's how much it takes, plus her fringe benefits, our entire Granicus contract. We recommend charging this at a per bedroom rate so that your larger STRs are paying more than your, so the person who's just renting out a bedroom in their house is not paying the same as someone who's doing a whole home rental. So we're looking at $145 per bedroom and based on the total number of bedrooms we have, which is 192, it's 27,840. So I think obviously we need to know if this regulatory fee is what you want to do. We are recommending you charge it annually. Um, so of course at the time of application and then every year when they renew, you charge the one-time regulatory fee.
Does it, do they renew, like, as you keep going, is it just always whenever they started, it just goes around or is it calendar year?
They expire quarterly. So we do like batches.
And then, but then they expire quarterly, but then once a year you add.
Correct. So no, right in, in February, you're not going to expire in February, you're going to expire in March. So that we're running them in batches. It's a lot.
I see what you're saying. So, uh, whatever quarter you've registered within, it it'll go to the end of your.
Exactly, yeah. So, so, yeah, I think it's in your budget. We put it in the budget, operating off the assumption, but I think we're just looking for the not a four, that this is a route you want to go.
Uh, Miranda, is this in addition to the license fee they pay every year?
This will be in addition to the license and the occupational tax.
How much is the license fee?
License fee is 100, 150 for, no, $100 for new, $75 for renewal. But we are recommending updating that. When we bring you the fee schedule, we are going to recommend increasing that by $25 a license. So it'd be $100 for renewal, 125 for new.
Miranda, if I can just jump in, it's 150 for a new one, so we're looking at increasing it to 175.
Thank you, Macy. I knew I was saying it wrong. Thank you, Macy.
175 plus this.
140.
Will be 145 per bedroom. So again, if it was just one person just renting out their bedroom, they pay 145. But if it's a five-bedroom home, they're paying a larger regulatory fee. And I think, you know, the argument for us is, again, we want to be mindful that if you're just renting out your bedroom, those are really the STRs you're preferring in many ways. I think that's the kind of the goal of the ordinance. And it is a lot more work when we're doing whole home rental regulations versus the single bedroom in someone's house when the host is present.
I mean, I'm almost wanting to waive that for the single bedroom when host is present because that is kind of what the whole point of short-term rental is. That's just me. I I understand that everybody should be making money off this.
How many single bedroom short-term rentals do we have?
Macy, do you happen to know that off the top of your head?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, I can look into it if you'd like.
Yeah.
I would just mention that even though they do have a one bedroom and their host present, they do require enforcement and they do require me to use my host compliance software when I receive their tax payments and to just check on them throughout the year. So there's, there's that.
Yeah, I'm inclined to go along with this. I, what I would ask, Miranda, is that we just, for, we take a one. Yeah, I'm inclined to go along with this. I, what I would ask, uh, Miranda is that we just for, we take a one bedroom. And a five bedroom and just do a before and after with all fees. So I'd just like to, I'd like to see. As it exists now and with this in place. What a one bedroom uh, STR would go, would go for, what a four bedroom would be. I just want to get an order of magnitude.
Got it.
Rule, uh, before I make a final decision.
Got it. Yep.
It's, it's gonna be a shocker for those bigger places. It's gonna be shocker for them, but it's gonna be a bigger shocker for, big shock for the folks with more business for sure.
I mean, what we can do though, we can do that by license. We wouldn't be able to estimate occupational tax because that's, it just varies all over the place.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Um, I'm sorry, this is off topic, but Rita, where in the budget am I going to see the, what an extra million dollars is going to look like in the budget?
You mean at C safe?
Yeah, I'm looking at the budget and.
It's gonna be under the interest line item.
Okay, thanks.
With, no, it's in all, it's all the different funds have it. So it's split through the different funds. So it's under.
Okay.
Number eighty four nine hundred.
I'm sorry, this is off topic. We'll get to it. I'm sorry.
So. Do we have enough to keep this in the budget but bring back some more file care? All right. The next is the sustainability and permit processing fee. So we recommended, you know, rather than the C and. Kind of instead of the C and D program, we do a sustainability and permit processing fee. What we determine is that Britt spends forty percent of her time. On permits. And then we also recognize that, you know, and it kind of a replacement of the C and D, that the sustainability coordinator position really could be covered under this fee. Um, so what we're kind of looking at is so much of the regulatory fee, you have to of course be charging it for something. We can't just like pick up a number and just start charging it. So. Doing a little. Math, we've determined that really we could bring in approximately sixty four thousand um, if we were to charge either a point seven five percent sustainability fee. On all project valuations for every single permit. Or we could keep it with just the permits that were charged C and D before, which is your new construction for commercial and residential plus demolition. In which case we'd recommend maybe charging a one percent fee. Both options help to offset. A portion of, of the planner's time, which comes in really just as revenue to offset Brit's time and then would cover. An ability to increase the sustainability coordinator to thirty hours per week and cover all of their time. So I would. Wonder what you think about this.
Yeah, I, I see a common pattern that we're doing, you know, across the board. Uh, our public, some of our public facing people that do have revenue tied to them, we're trying to recover their costs.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we, we're tying Brit's time, but also recognizing that as sustainability coordinator. Everything they do is, is often in the building space. A lot of what she does is in the building space. This gives her an opportunity to run the C and D program, but also review plans. From a sustainability perspective. And so that's why we kind of tied the two together and are calling it a sustainability and permit processing because it helps us offset both personnels. Pay their salaries.
Yeah, I, I gotta say, um. You know, uh, um, Leah has been on board for a while now and I. I really, I've, since I haven't been on SAB, I haven't seen a lot of what she does. When she, I went back and looked at her last report and it blew me away how much she got done. Um, very quietly.
And at twenty hours.
Yep. So your proposal is to take it to thirty?
Uh, our proposal is, do you want to, I guess our ask is, do you want to charge this fee? And if so, do you want to charge it to all permits at a lower percentage? Or just the, or just the permits we typically charge C and D to, which is new construction demolition at a one percent.
To all permits, uh, they must totally range in, in.
Yeah, so we're giving you a valuation on twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two project valuations is what's in this slide. So we estimated, you know, we're.
Thousand dollar fee would be seven dollars and fifty cents if you went like for some of these smaller, smaller projects.
Correct. If we went, right, it's really minimal for these smaller projects. If you went every project just had this stacked on. Or you go one percent, it's really not a huge difference. Or you're going one percent on all new construction and demolition. If you're not interested in going all permits.
What are we charging now?
We don't charge, we charge the C and D, which is twenty five cents per square footage, which is the deposit where seventy percent can be reimbursed.
But you know, but I've, I've done.
What, what does that kind of average out to for projects?
It's, it's really hard to say because. Square footage is varying from building to building. So I, I really can't give you that off the top of my head because, you know, something like maybe a large scale. Multi million dollar development, that's going to have a much higher C and D deposit than you're just doing, you know, small seven hundred square foot. Structure.
I've done like four, four permitted jobs and to which I did the, so like a roof. Re shingle and then porch remodel now. And I generate waste. I mean, and that was kind of good to go back to the C and D and sustainability. Like I had to. Rent a whole trailer from Brian and, you know, filled it up and then, you know, and now I'm just taking it piecemeal through the porch, but like. Small projects generate waste too. And I think that's kind of what this was after in the first place was trying to, and I do my best to divert and, you know. Divert waste diversion, but like, yeah, I just think frankly, all the little projects could pay into this.
Right. And I think, yeah, we really view it as an opportunity for, you know, it's, it's hard for the planner to, to do C and D. We've recognized that. So. If there was a tag team approach with the sustainability coordinator, the planner, the sustainability coordinator could reach out and be like, how's it going with your project of whatever size? Here's how I connect you to resource or here are some other opportunities for you and just really keep that engagement going. But, but yes, I guess our, my feeling is that should be offset by a permit fee that pays for that sustainability coordinator's time.
And, and just, you know, just for numbers, like I think it was like three hundred, two hundred something for the re-roof and two, two something for, I mean, I'd be paying like. Al- almost like three dollars.
Right. For your smaller scale, one stop permits, it's a minimal fee. It's really, then you look at your large scale developments, but I think. We're putting it in here because I, one of the comments was stressing for one, saying you had maybe concerns about it going to all permits. I think what you'll see is. The fee, either it's all permits or new construction, one point seven five to one percent is like minimal fees, but. Our project valuations are typically in the six to eight million dollar range. So. It's still, that sixty four thousand dollars is great and, and it's not a huge cost being passed on to the permit holder.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand before they have the opportunity to get that money back, if the debris was recycled or. Repurposed, correct? And now that option's not available at all?
So as I mentioned in the last session, I think we would recommend the third option that was on that PowerPoint. I'm sorry, I didn't carry it over. Which was you charge this fee and if you're interested in diverting your waste, then we'll give you up to fifty percent of your permit fee back.
Right.
Permit fees vary based on project valuation again, but we.
That, that policy is still happening?
Yeah, I think we still want to keep the C and D program, but unlike a deposit, it's really like you, you demonstrate you've diverted waste. We'd like to give fifty percent of your permit fee and. Permit fees can be anywhere from a hundred bucks to seven, seven thousand dollars. I mean, it's all over the place, but you know, obviously if you have a huge. Multi thousand dollar permit fee, you have more waste that you're gonna, we'd love to see you divert. And so I think our recommendation to you all is. Don't do it as a deposit program anymore. Do it as if you do this because you want to, we'll give you back fifty percent of your permit.
My question is, do the numbers that you've provided here factor in fifty percent refund?
They don't and they, and I guess they really can't because you can only charge a reg, a fee like this, like the regulatory fee for the actual. Perform, work performed. So yes, you run the risk of seeing a dip maybe in, in the revenue for permits, but. You know, I guess part of me just says like, maybe we try it for a year and see how detrimental that is. If a lot of people get super jazzed about diverting. Their waste, then that's a great problem to have. And then we figure out in twenty twenty five, what's the next solution for that?
Is there no effective way to, to budget for the potential that we are refunding fifty percent?
I guess we could take all the individuals, we could, we could figure out how many permits we just reimburse C and D for and average that probably. Yeah, it's, it's possible.
Yeah. So really back to the, the, the C and D program we have in place now. Um, we've mentioned that last time. Even though they can come ask for those monies. Twenty four thousand is sitting there.
Right.
That, you know, at some point I was, you know, telling Miranda, we gotta either refund it or book it as revenue. So it's, that's really not working well. I have to say, so I don't know how you would go about. Calculating that, but.
I think we would just, yeah, take a, a portion of permit fees and then figure out, you know, say ten percent of permits. Go after this program. What is that decrease? I do think it's possible. Yeah.
I just don't like the thought of having a, something, a revenue booked in the budget that's paying for someone's salary. That we might be refunding. A significant portion of depending on who's doing the building.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we would have to. Obviously account for that.
Right.
Even though I like the revenue.
Yeah.
So, so I like this idea. I'm, I'm in favor of it. I just would like to see it budgeted. Accounting for that potential.
Sure. Yeah.
And I'm sorry, this is one more question similar. Uh, this is just based on. The average amount of permits that you guys have gotten over like a ten year period. So you, you pretty much are pretty confident that this is the number. Uh, that you can budget?
It's a two year. That's the data we have is two years, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. So we just took the past. Two years. Um, but as. I would say it's a pretty consistent. That we're seeing, you know, this is somewhere between six to eight million. And project valuation.
Think it's also worth.
Again, I like what, to Eric's point, this is not just money going into our budget to be. allocated after we know how much we're making. We've got somebody's job on the line that we're not going to fire. Or cut hours. We're gonna have to, it's going to come out of our budget if there's a shortfall. So, um. I guess we have the money to do so. So it's not a problem, but. Interesting. We'll see for next year.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. So obviously like, let's take the community planner. That's in your budget, right? She's in your general fund. We're just looking at an opportunity to offset forty percent of her salary. And if it doesn't work. You still budget it for her in your general fund. So it's not like we have a, a person's job.
I was thinking about the sustainability coordinator.
Sure. I mean, the sustainability coordinator, typically we would budget just outright the match, which was eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. Um, this we feel gives us an opportunity to increase her hours. Um. Hopefully ideally, I, I hear what you're saying, like ideally cover her time from the match. Um, utilizing this fee, but if we don't, we would typically have budgeted eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty for her anyways.
Yeah. And to that end, I think that I, I'm leaning towards a point seven five percent on all permits rather than just the. The new because it sounds like that would be a more consistent and uh, you know, achievable revenue stream. Versus relying on new builds.
Right.
And they all create waste. Right? So.
Yeah, I think that's our recommendation as well. I mean, for every permit, we charge a use tax, accounting tax, and then be the sustainability permit fee at a point seven five percent and it would just be applied. It makes it easy on our end too. When we're, we know that those are automatically the fees that go forward and then everything else varies based on your project type. Yes, continue forward with bringing back more.
I think so.
Be the nod or, or what do you need to continue?
Just move, I know, I mean, nods are nice. Just moving forward. All right. Rita's turn and now we're really getting into the budget. Finally, we're getting there. We're doing this.
Okay. All right. We'll start off with sales tax revenue. We did talk about that last time. We are trending four point four percent higher or sixty two thousand in actual sales tax revenues received so far. Um, when compared to the twenty two actual.
Is this consistent with the thing we got yesterday, not the one we got Friday?
We have not changed any of these.
Yes, we did not change anything.
Okay, okay.
I just added some descriptions to the utility fund.
Okay.
Line items. Anyhow, and so therefore we are trending seventeen below in the general fund and four percent below in all other funds. Um, as of September's financials. So I did change my mind and I'm recommending to keep sales tax revenue the same. For all of twenty twenty four, for all funds except the general fund. And adjusted general fund based on year to date actual funds received in twenty twenty three and estimates throughout the end of the year. I'm sure you all agree because like, I think Tom had said in the past. It's pretty flat and. What happened obviously in twenty twenty three, as mentioned before, we budgeted a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of revenue for a point two five increase in sales tax. And that is not happening. And I'd rather. Budget too low than too high. And then, you know, we're in the same boat as we are this year. So that's my recommendation for sales tax.
It makes sense. We're always looking at it in arrears anyway. So it's.
Exactly.
It's.
I mean.
Yeah.
I'm going to get one more month of sales tax revenue here in a couple of days by the tenth. So that will make, by the next time we meet, you know, that might change. I doubt it. But, um, anyway, so that's my recommendation. Uh, leave all the funds the same other than the general fund, adjust that downwards. A little bit. Everybody okay with that? Moving on.
Yeah.
Property taxes. Good news is property HH did not pass. So what we're looking at here, the numbers.
Good and.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll chat you on.
Right. Okay. So what is highlighted in yellow is actually what I used in the budget. So I did use seven hundred and sixty eight thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars for revenue. That will stay as is. And just to explain what, now that we know that proposition HH did not pass is. If the assessed valuation were to stay the same as we're seeing here at, at its full um, amount forty five thousand, eight hundred and thirty two thousand. The revenue we would be getting, starting in twenty twenty five would be going back up to have seven hundred and ninety one thousand. So that's the goodness. Okay.
There's something else to throw out there on the sales.
Sales tax?
I, I'm, I'm slightly on this, but I'm. Talked to Christian Vanek today. I mean, I think they're gonna, we're gonna start seeing money coming out of that bank. In a new way with.
What are you talking about?
Next year. Yeah, yeah, I went back to sales tax. I'm just saying that we may have more sales tax coming, you know, in next year, starting about midway through the year. With several businesses in that bank, so.
And you know, like I said, I prefer that versus.
Yeah. We don't budget, but it's just nice to know that.
Nice to have additional revenue, right?
It's likely that's gonna.
Oh, that would be amazing. Just quickly, um, we did talk about the two different types of funds we have. We have the government funds, which is every fund other than water and sewer. And we do have um, a hundred and forty thousand dollars of reserved funds in the general fund. And um, the hundred and ten thousand dollars from BCHA, the town staff did request that these funds be reserved for match funding for future cocoa grants. And then um, moving on to the proprietary funds, um, combined reserves funds there are six hundred and seventy seven, oh, excuse me. Um. Combined is. Anyway, nine hundred some thousand. And those funds are held, as I mentioned before, in a special bank account. And those will not be used um, unless the board directs us on what to do with those funds. So really not much as far as um, talking about budgets, just to know that we have these reserve funds in the general fund and in the water and sewer fund. Now we start talking about. Figures. So throughout this presentation, just like I do every year, I highlighted in green the change in net assets. Uh, for the twenty twenty two year, um, where we are compare, comparing budgeted versus actual figures. And in yellow, the current change in net assets. That might be helpful information when you guys look at the twenty twenty four budget numbers. So, oh, I. That is nice. I don't have to say that. We do have, not worry about property taxes now. So in twenty twenty two. The town budgeted a decrease in the fund balance of two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars and the actual change in net assets shows an increase of eighty four thousand. So that's a total increase of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The general fund's operating budget is in the black. With an operating difference of eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety. And once we add in the capital expenditures of two hundred and eleven thousand. And the transfers, we end up with an overall decrease or change in net assets of a hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred and eighty nine. And lastly, what I want to say about the general fund is. In looking at September's financials, which I think is always important to look at where we're at currently. Um, the change in fund balance shows an increase of eighty nine thousand dollars versus a budgeted decrease of three hundred and thirty seven thousand. Um. I mean, I say this every year. I think it's important not to just look at where we're at right now. But since I started working every year, I mean, the change in fund balance, we has increased. but since I started working every year, I mean, the change in fund balance, we has increased tremendously. And I think that is important to know when we discuss the current year, which right now, that is assuming all these revenue funds we've talked about, they're gonna come true. And we know potentially the hundred and twenty thousand dollars in speed for speeding, the speeding machines, whatever they're called, may not happen. Speeding machines, they're speeding machines. It's past my bedtime. So yeah, so that is, like I said, assuming all those revenue that we discussed are included in the hundred and fifty five thousand decrease. So what do you think?
So essentially, what you're saying, we're in the red, one fifty five.
And whatever we take out, it's gonna get worse.
Everything comes true. All of, if we, and they generally don't. So we're minimum of a hundred and fifty five thousand upside down.
If, if this budget that you're looking at came true, that would be correct.
Right.
But then again, like I said, so September financials.
Yeah.
Were in the positive eighty nine thousand, and I believe we budgeted two hundred and forty three thousand in the negative.
Yeah.
For twenty three. Yes.
Yeah.
But, but to be honest, too, I mean, the savings in the past years have truly been because of personnel. Right? I do believe that 2024 personnel amounts that you see in the budget will probably come true.
Yep.
Now, that's why I'm hoping for more revenue, unexpected revenue. That would be nice. So Billy, if that came true, that would be great. But anyway.
I mean, the way that I'm looking at it is more on that operating expenditures, right? Like the, the capital expenditures, the, the transfer. I mean, to me, those are kind of more elective decisions that we're making, right, to go into the, to go into the red. It's the operating expenditure that is really tight at eighteen thousand in the, in the black, and I don't think.
But it's in the black.
I don't think it will be, honestly, like at the end of next year. I think it would be, it would be awesome if it were.
Yeah.
But I think that it's a, we're making a lot of assumptions because of a lot of different changes that we're trying to make to increase revenue. So we just can't rely on those assumptions coming true. So that, that to me is the razor-thin margin. I'm less concerned about those capital expenditures.
But at the same time, if I remove the hundred and twenty thousand, that is no longer going to be in the black.
Indeed, and that's exactly how I'm thinking about it.
Yeah. And that's what we need to probably assume that is going to happen, so. Any other questions?
I guess that also doesn't account for potential 50% refunds on that.
That's true. That's gonna make, yeah, that's another one. Yep. Yes, Tanya?
Oh, what was I gonna ask? Related to last year, the capital expenditures that were eight hundred and eight thousand dollars versus this year of two hundred and eleven. Refresh my memory on what the six hundred thousand dollar difference was.
So what I needed to include is, in 2023, we did the supplemental budget for the five hundred and twenty one thousand dollars of equipment purchased for the streets.
Oh, gotcha.
And it had to be input as an in and an out for asset recording purposes.
Okay, and, and this budget under revenue throughout the budget interest has double the amount invested in the C-Safe or whatever it was called.
Yes, ma'am. Another, another one million, not, we have one.
Right, so you two.
An additional, yep.
And so that gives us roughly the double what there was, another forty thousand or so-ish.
You said there's a million and a half now in there now, and then we add another million, so there.
We could.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's what this.
It's in the budget, like if this budget reflects that we are going to do that.
Yes, so if you don't want that, then that makes it work.
Lose thirty, forty thousand under revenue. Okay. I think that was it for now. Thank you.
Just, just for informational purposes, in the general fund, this one here, I added an additional seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for interest calculation.
I'm just kinda seeing it. I'm like, my eyes are just going blind.
You wouldn't see it under here as a separate line item. It's listed under the lineup, the, when I have the detailed, the detail that I say.
Oh, it's not under revenue, under a line that says interest then.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Then I, I'm not going blind. Okay.
Moving on.
Thank you.
So Community Center is my absolute favorite. They are operating in the black, and they are projecting an increase to their fund balance of ninety four thousand. And looking at 2022, just really quick, same thing, budgeted at a loss. I'm sorry?
Nothing. Change the slide, Miranda.
Oh, I did.
Give it a second.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'm just dialing on the computer.
Okay, just quickly, looking at 2022, same as the general fund, budgeted in the, as a loss of forty four thousand, but actual change in net assets ended up being a gain of thirty six thousand. Really not much else to say about the Community Center Fund. Good job, Don.
Keep those pipes clean.
Okay, so the water fund obviously has a very healthy fund balance. We are gonna look at 2022 first. We budgeted a decrease of twenty thousand dollars, but ended up with an increase of two hundred and ten thousand. Obviously, that's a huge difference. And just for 2021, because I just think it's so amazing, we budgeted an increase of seventy one thousand, and actuals came in two hundred and eighty one thousand. So combined between twenty one and twenty two, the water fund increased their fund balance by four hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. Yes, there is. So let's see. So really, before I talk about the 2024 budget, I think it's important to mention that per the September financials, we are seeing an increase to the fund balance in the amount of fifty nine thousand dollars versus, versus a budgeted decrease of seventy seven thousand. That's where, where we're at as of September. So in 2024, the water fund operating budget is showing a negative balance of eighty four thousand nine seventy six. However, when we add in the other sources of cash and other expenditures, we end up with a decrease to the fund balance in the amount of sixty one thousand eight hundred and thirty seven dollars. Any questions on the water fund? And Andrew's here, if you have any questions. And he's awake.
Yep. When are you getting your, your GIS or your asset management system? Our goal is to complete it next year. Can you hear me now? There's a green light.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, get closer to that one. Like, I almost need it.
Can you hear me now? Okay. The goal is to finish it next year. We just had a meeting and we're getting started on several aspects of it. So we hope to have some results to show you before the end of this year, but complete it next year.
And that is part of the CIP project, right? So, yeah, I think we, what was it? How much did we budget? Was it thirty? No. Oh, seventeen thousand five hundred in the waters fund, and then seventeen five hundred, seventeen thousand five hundred in the sewer fund as well.
And increasing on our annual operating expense for it, too. So part of the work we're doing with our J S consultant now is figuring out what's gonna be our ongoing expense, and we expect it to be more than what it has been as well, in addition to the CIP.
And yet.
This is, whoops, back on the, Miranda, when are we gonna finish the lidar stuff? This is back to streets for a second.
Well, we're, oh. All right, sorry, take two. We're actually, I just talked with Nathan. We hope to even be able to kick it off because we're doing a portion of it under the Big Springs Egress Grant next week or the week after to start some initial lidar work. And then it'll carry into probably spring. Doing it in the winter will be a little challenging with snow. But we can, we can do as much as we can right now. That's our goal. Try to get as much done now as we can.
Any other questions on the water fund? Or did we already go to the sewer fund? No, water fund before we move on? Okay. So the sewer fund also has a very healthy fund balance. Overall increase in 2022 between the budget and actual change in net assets was an increase of a hundred and fifty five thousand. Looking at their 2024 operating budgets, they are operating in the black. Revenue minus expenditures equals an increase of a hundred and twenty eight thousand five hundred and seventy two. When we add other sources of cash in the amount of three hundred and fifty three thousand six sixteen and other expenditures for debt services and capital improvements, we are project, we are projecting a decrease in fund balance of sixty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy one dollars. And just like trustee Kumsizma said with the other, I think it was the water fund, this is operating in the black, it was not the water fund, operating revenues in the black, right? And then once we add capital expenditures to it, we end up with a decrease in fund balance. Any questions on the sewer fund?
I guess, I mean, anytime I see a decrease in a fund balance, I, my first reaction is I get concerned.
Of course.
But as Miranda pointed out, well, you're supposed to spend your budget. But is it, is this sustainable in, to run a fund down like this?
So to me, on a three million dollar fund balance, I'm not worried about sixty eight thousand dollars.
Three, four, eight, eight to three, four, one, nine.
Yeah, we can live with it.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And perhaps I'll add, you know, water sewers is a bit different than the streets fund that has the, the sales tax. And I think that's a bit of my argument is people are paying a tax for the streets fund. And that's why it is my belief and philosophy that that should get spent down quite a bit unless you know specifically what you're saving for. Which is the next fund?
My, my only addition is to warn you that we have very large projects coming in the near future. So that fund will be used for large projects the coming years.
And that is also why our rate study and our rates are what they are, because those large projects were predicted and coming down the pike. So if we then didn't do those large projects, it would be a slap of the face to everyone who's been paying those rates.
Next slide. Okay, so the fund, the streets fund was created to use, obviously, on street repairs. And point two five of the four point two five sales tax is allocated to the street fund. The fund balance had increased over the years. Therefore, we had budgeted a significant amount to be spent in 2023 for a total of two hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred. Not sure the 2023 budgeted funds will be spent. As of the September financials, we've only spent eighty seven thousand of the two hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred. And I know that is gonna change because the first payment went out here in at the beginning of November for the loan payment, the equipment funds, and that's that fifty seven thousand two oh one you're seeing under the twenty three revised budget is going to definitely be added to that eighty seven thousand, but I'm not worried about the rest.
And talking with Josh, we actually, I mean, we're running out of time, right? Row work gets hard in the winter, so it is, we do not anticipate any large expenditures through the end of the year. So you will have a healthy carryover from this year to next year.
And that's what I was gonna talk about next. So currently, we budgeted in the 2024 budget to spend two hundred and fifty two thousand seven oh one, which would end up with a decrease to the fund balance in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and twenty three. I do want to point out, on top of that, though, that we did budget as well in 2024 a transfer over to the general fund to offset half of the loan for equipment purchases made in this year. We felt that that was appropriate. Any questions on the street fund?
I agree, but it's appropriate.
You think so?
Yeah.
Good. I know there were some concerns, I think, was it trustee Severs? So, I mean, so right now, we're leaving a fund ending balance of thirty four thousand, but if, if it comes true that we're not spending it all, then that will, of course, increase as well, but go ahead.
Well, my concern was good, was with the culverts and the expenditure on the culverts. And can you tell me how much we're planning to spend on culverts in this draft?
Fifty thousand.
Thousand, yeah.
So you know, having installed many culverts myself in many different building jurisdictions, the customer and the homeowners have always paid for those, and I've installed them on driveways, on roadways, and that's just what I'm used to. So I am in support of moving the needle on our master infrastructure plan and doing, you know, supportive measures like allocating this money for the streets fund to make improvements to our streets. I reviewed the strategic goals and saw that, you know, our objective for the upcoming year is to identify the funding for the culverts. And so that's, I was, I'm in favor of removing a good portion of that budget. Excuse me. For 2024 and to allocate perhaps ten thousand dollars on culverts, install a few, try to get some promotional work done, and you know, generate a bit of a buzz around the fact that it's great to have a culvert in front of your driveway, especially instead of a large ditch, and and utilizing our public outreach director strategically for that and to encourage and incentivize our residents to pay for their own culverts and to demand that new construction and new site developments require a culvert as well, so.
Yes, our code actually does require new, the challenges, you know, we look at like Old Town, you know, we're not seeing a lot of new construction there. It's a lot of those homes. We really wanna target Old Town, and a lot of our lidar work will focus on that. Yeah, I mean, my response, as you all saw, you know, to Jesse was really recognizing we don't have to have it be our funds. I think the thought was that's a dent, you know, we could do some work. But yes, it was gonna be on, on the owners. They wouldn't have to pay. Yes, our code does allow us to go back to the owner and say, you must pay for this culvert. I think it's, it's, I think that what I appreciated about trustee Severs was a phased approach, and so we are in support of decreasing this line item if you'd like and letting JVA guide us on what's the best approach, what's the best strategy, rather than just having the money. Because we don't know. We have to do all that lidar work before we even know our approach to culverts. So if you'd like to hold, and that becomes more of a working with homeowners, and we decide, you know, what are our financial priorities in 2025? It's just a part of the summer road improvement plan, and I think the hope was in the strategic plan, we would run all components of the summer road improvement plan next year. So that would be maybe delaying stage four to potentially 2025.
The one thing I just, yeah, it's just some homeowners may not have the cash kicking around to kick into that, fixed income, or just don't have much money, and I don't, I am super concerned about that. I agree, and I do, I am in support of assisting and encourage, you know, subsidizing homeowners that want a culvert or need a culvert and can demonstrate a financial need.
I think we can't make them put a culvert in if we're not gonna pay for it, but we can suggest that it's gonna help the road. I like having it in the budget, and I like spending this fund down because this is a sales tax people voted on. It's the number one thing I hear about from people are complaints about the roads, so we should be spending it. Maybe this isn't the best use of the spending. This was what our previous streets guy identified as something that was gonna help the streets, so that's why it's in the master plan, the strategic plan. And if that was identified, I'm sure it's for good reason, so I am in favor of keeping it in and paying for it ourselves. And because I don't think the burden should be on the homeowner on this part, it's, it should be a choice at that point. And given the choice, most people aren't gonna do it. So that's where I stand on this.
I mean, another thought would be, we, we budgeted fifty thousand for that, and trustee Severs. recommended maybe 10,000, maybe go 30,000, right? Knowing that that would increase the fund balance by 20. But then also, like I said, realizing that I am sure that fund balance will increase because we're not gonna be spending all of, um, the 2023 budget.
Yeah, and I, I think that the challenge that we have is just without the light or data, we're just not really sure, right? We're not really sure, like, what's the culvert priority area? How can we tier it as trustee Severs had recommended? We're just not gonna know until we have that data and we won't have that data mid-year. So the thought was like, make the funds available and then maybe we come back to you and if you say you left the 50,000 or the 30, whatever it is you want to do, we come back to you and say, here's now our planned approach. But we, I think, we'd love to not do supplementals. I mean, I think our hope is like, can we leave something there and then we come back to you later with a proposal of an approach?
That's exactly what I was gonna say is that I think that trustee Severs' approach makes sense, but I don't think that means that we necessarily have to reduce the budget. Like, I think that town staff can come up with a system for applying that budget in the most effective way possible and to help the people who actually need it the most, based on the data that we get, give them the flexibility of the line item. Maybe they don't even spend it all and next year we're talking about allocating it somewhere else. But I'd rather be allocated than not allocated because then if streets wants to do something, they gotta come back with supplemental and that would be such a pain.
Back to supplementals, um, I haven't been here forever, but do we, have we typically done supplementals every year or is that a rare thing?
That's a Rita thing. Since I've started, that's what we're doing.
And I don't know why. Maybe what we'll say is you've done supplementals to pay staff. I asked you for a 10% increase for staff in 2022. We did a compensation study, so every time we've recognized the need to pay staff, obviously that we hope that the compensation study, bringing everyone to those minimums, there will be no need for a supplemental. We'd like to avoid it any way we can. It's a lot of work, but, but you, the catalyst for your supplementals have always been increases in wages.
Okay. So I, uh, I, I want to guess that we revisit this in the supplemental.
And then let's just be honest, it's wages is the complicated piece, right, of a supplemental budget? Because you have the payroll taxes, the benefits, et cetera, et cetera. It's not necessarily one line item, but if we could avoid it for one year, that would be right.
And, and even if it isn't complicated for you, Rita, it takes up a whole lot of time in more trustee meetings, right? And we could be doing other things. So, yeah, I'd just rather the streets money be allocated to streets work in general. And we can work out the, the, the details as we actually know the information that we need to do it. Fine by me.
Me too.
Didn't expect that.
Anybody online have a comment or?
Just keep rolling.
Okay, next. Parks fund, new fund, pretty straightforward. We are estimating that the 5% marijuana retail sales tax will earn $85,000 in revenue. And we did go ahead and move the parks maintenance and trail sidewalk maintenance line item to this, uh, fund from the general fund. We did change, when we talked last, we had first talked about moving the building maintenance to this, uh, fund, which I felt in talking to Miranda, that just doesn't make sense. It should be the, um, trail sidewalk maintenance line item. And, um, 44,000, um, projected in expenditures with a fund ending balance of 44,000.
Sorry, which building maintenance?
So when we talked, um, originally a couple of weeks ago, we had said, hey, let's move the building maintenance line item expenditure to this fund.
Just building in general, not a specific?
It was called building maintenance, a line item.
Right, and the reason, the reason I said, uh, when Rita and I talked about it, it's like, yes, building could be Chappeta Park, right? Or the, the pavilion or the visitor center, but it's also the public workshop. And I'm not sure we're saying with this fun, we want this fun to go offset pub, the public workshop needs. Like, it's really meant for parks and trails. So we made a little judgment call and we moved this one over instead.
Right.
I like it.
Makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah. The only building would be Glassby House.
Glassby, um. Yeah, for the parks buildings that we have that we maintain, the Glassby House is probably, I mean, the pavilion, like we said, at, at Chappeta. Potentially some of the rink. If you want to call those buildings.
Sure.
Could come out of that fund. Um, but typically what goes in there is public workshop, town hall, visitor center, the annex, those kinds of things, so. So the conversation, conversation, conservation trust fund is very regulated, uh, on how we can spend these funds. Those funds have to be used for parks and trails improvements. Now, we did increase expenditures for 2024 to include an estimated 15,000 of unused fat balance to be carried over from 2023. Therefore, we are showing a decrease of 15,000 to the fund balance. Any questions? Good. Next. All right, the health and human services fund, lodging occupation tax revenue is collected at a general fund. The board approves appropriations yearly. Town staff is recommending a 51%, 49% split for 2024. Estimated lodging occupation tax revenue for 2024, we are estimating $40,000 in revenue. And therefore 55, 51% of that would equal 20,400, which is currently, which currently has been allocated, um, to the health and human services fund. So that would be a decision, I guess, the board would need to make about, um, changing the split from 99% and 1% to 51 and 49%. So anyway, that is what we did for this fund. Um, the revenue and expenditures you're seeing are at the 51, 49% split.
We're gonna need it.
I know.
And I guess I will just remind that we did talk to the food pantry. The food pantry is understanding. They, they have funds, they're really mindful with the distribution of their funds. They did provide kind of a financial breakdown, everything looks great. And so while yes, it is less, I do know that they'll continue to be stewards. And of course there's Canaan Cares, there's EFA, there are other funding opportunities that we promote. And so it's not that this is the only stream available to individuals who need assistance. I don't know if Tom view of anything.
Nope, um, yeah, we're in alignment.
Thank you. Any other questions? You're moving on, okay. I don't know, is Kate still on or has she been on? Was she on? Okay, well, all right. Uh, I was gonna talk about it and then she was gonna answer any questions, but anyhow. So about this slide, even though you're seeing the non-TIF and TIF funding separate on this slide, they are combined for reporting in the financials provided by our auditors at year end. So that's important to know because obviously this looks a little off when you look at this, but that's just how this was created. And I've said this prior years that it's hard to not, to change this because of, of history and, and amounts being in these different line items. Anyhow, the DDA's operating budget has increased some compared to the 2023. They increased their legal by 8,500 and their personal and accounting by 8,449. The DDA is projecting to use 860,875 dollars for various new TIF projects in 2024 and carrying over 161,000 from previous projects for a total amount of 1,024,490 appearing in the line item called capital. Looking at the combined 2022 budgeted change in net assets, it shows a decrease to the fund balance in the amount of 263,000. That is the negative 5283 plus the negative 258,387 in 2022. Actual decrease was only 30,000. For 2024, the NDDA is budgeting an overall decrease to their fund balance in the amount of 692,000. That is the 175,272 negative and 516,975 negative. I do want to point out that the budgeted property tax and TIF revenue were kept the same as last year, which is very conservative. And actual revenue most likely will be higher. If we look at, for example, their TIF revenue actuals in 2022 came in at 370,000 versus budgeted 350,000. And we know that property tax is gonna go up for sure. I mean, I think it will definitely be higher than what they budgeted. As always, I say this every year, just because you might approve this budget, the process hasn't changed. They would still come before you with any TIF project and present it as an, an informational item and explain to you what they are hoping to accomplish with TIF funds. Next, they would bring a resolution to you and you would then approve it.
End up this fund balance that we're looking at is actually funds that come from previously passed resolutions for projects anyway.
Not the 862,000.
Not the
Not the new projects.
Not the new projects, yeah.
That's correct.
But the, but the, the fund balance from previous years.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is money we want to go to zero.
And we're getting close. But again, that's why I was hoping, um, if Kate was still here, they're obviously carrying over 160,000, right? So their fund balance will change by that. If, if that were an accurate number, the 160,000, their fund balance would increase by that. So again, um, as far as fund balance go, it's obviously the 813,000, um, 728 plus the 683060, so that leaves you at about 130. And then you add another 160,000 that they're potentially carrying over. So we're back to 290,000, give or take. And I think that's it for me.
So before you engage in whatever discussion you want to engage in, just a reminder of what's next. Um, on the 21st, we will have this as a, a regular discussion item during your regular meeting. On November 28th is your special meeting for a public hearing only. Our hope is that we can approve the, but you can all approve the budget by December 5th, but there's the fallback date of December 12th if necessary.
And that's all become a lot easier now if proposition HH did not pass, because if it would have passed, that could have postponed all these dates as well.
So it's maybe likely we won't, we may not need the 12th unless you need more time.
The special meeting, November 28th, real quick, is that really just public comment or what?
The public
I can't remember, I just can't remember.
Yeah, so where Rita would do an, an additional review for the public, like she just did for you all. And then you would just take public comment typically. Your turn to talk about whatever else it is you want to talk about.
So I want to just repeat, we're gonna decrease the speeding machines, um, or the but we're gonna decrease that, we'll talk about that, right? And then also, um, what else to?
I have a whole list.
Okay, good.
Okay, for the record, all right, um, we, for the sustainability and perm, I'm gonna work my way backwards. Sustainability and permit processing, we are going to assess what the decrease in revenue would be for permitting if we were to reimburse 50% of permits because of the CND program. For short-term rental regulatory fee, we're gonna bring back data on how much someone would pay for a one bedroom versus a five bedroom. We're keeping the Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence for now, the 10,000. We're gonna engage the IT provider, Allmount Technologies, in order to get you realistic, accurate IT figures for paid parking, um, no changes, we're just gonna engage. Uh, and then for the speed cameras, the speed machines, we are going to bring back data on locations, accidents, fatalities, speeds, location of tickets, as well as the, the funds for two mobile units and what that is, is a monthly cost. And then, um, look at reduction of revenue. Those are our takeaways.
And then Nicole, she was saying, look at like the speeds over the is that what you meant by, she's, okay.
So unless there's anything else you want to discuss tonight for us to evaluate in our budget, maybe I'll just throw, there were things that moved around, you would ask staff questions, we responded to some. There were some, we said, you should probably bring this back online to talk about. I know it's late, but I'm just gonna quickly say it, it was sirens in the grant writer.
Thank you, because I forgot, was it sirens or what?
Sirens in the grant writer, and I said, I would recommend you talk about that as a group. I don't know if you want to do that today, but obviously we need to know, if you wanted us to include either of those in the budget, since they're both costs, they're both expenditures, it would be nice to know tonight.
I do not.
I do not. We talked about the grant writer, I feel like, a lot during strategic planning. He gave his direction back then that it was not recommended, so.
I mean, to me, grants, grants just don't, uh, they don't move the needle in the way that I think we need to move the needle. And that is on our operating expenditures, like, I feel bad because of the way the budget looks and because this is probably my last budget season. So I feel bad leaving, leaving it at this to some extent. So I just want to say, like, I recognize this isn't great, but, um, I think we're doing a lot of good things with the money. I think it's having, it will have a high impact on, on everyone, uh, and, and quality of life in the town, but uh, I just think we really need to move next year into an operating expenditures in that general fund that is in the black balance and sustainable moving forward, so.
And then we'll look backwards and say that damned Eric Kumsizma'll budget from 2023.
Exactly, exactly. Like, I, I am worried about, uh, these revenues actually panning out as revenues.
And that's a good point. I mean, I want to remind everybody, these are estimates. Just like the 135,000 dollar was for sales tax revenue in the general fund, so.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, that general fund operating expenditure is not in the black, right, in my brain, because of the opinions I hold of various things in, in terms of our revenue stream. So in my mind, I'm, I'm considering right now passing a budget that has operating in the, in, in, in the red and I don't like it, but.
Just drive fast, you can help.
Yeah, like a, like a bat straight out of hell.
Yeah, I think, um, I know we had some emails about the, um, siren, like I'm still a fan, but I think we talked really more about going to find money for that elsewhere down the road. I mean, if it was a real concern with the community that we just needed it, you know, we do have reserves, but like, I, I don't, that's definitely not the first choice.
We just spent them.
Yeah, oh yeah, exactly. That's not a first choice. It's really more of a, and you know, and I know, I looked more at that email from the county about the wild, about the wildfire mitigation funds. There's one line item that looks like a possibility for that kind of thing, but that would be something to drill into more.
Yeah, Nikki did kind of an initial review of it today, and so we'll chat more about it, but.
So that might be a place where money could come from too. And as for the grant writer, yeah, I mean, funding isn't really an option right now, but what were you, did you mention Dr. Cog or something as heck in the service?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, essentially you and I have talked about this, they've got a grant writing team down there, um, and they'll be at our disposal for the next couple of years, at least that's how long it's funded.
Yep, and they're gonna really help us with the IIJA, you know, if we're gonna go at this point, you know. And, and actually Andrew and I were talking about to say, like, if we're going for multimillion dollar grants, typically our engineers or some sort of third party is coming in to help us. Andrew's experience, I don't know if you want to speak to it, is that often grant writers end up doing a lot of the smaller grants. And I think the point of my email was like, it's not just money, there's a lot of work. And so we don't want a whole bunch of small ones, they're exhausting. If we're gonna do it, we want multimillion dollar grants that JVA help write for us.
Yeah, and if DOLA could, I mean, if those IIJA monies might be great to get.
Right, and, and JVA is keeping their pulse on it, DOLA is, Dr. Cog is, and so I feel like we're in good hands.
I meant to say Dr.
Yeah, I think we're in good hands from third parties being able to say, hey, this is, this is exactly what you need and then supporting us with it. And so I, I guess that's where I, my recommendation was hold off on that position.
This is Tanya, I think I'm the only one that disagrees. I mean, I think we could probably find grants that would send all you guys to that workshopping that, the 10,000 and grants for the sirens and grants for a lot of our expenditures. That grants for the sustainability coordinator, I just, I, I know there's grants out there, but none of us are gonna do it because we're volunteers and you guys are staff that are overwhelmed. So, um, we're just leaving money on the table, but if nobody else is interested in it, I'm not certainly gonna push for it.
So, um, we're just leaving money on the table, but if nobody else is interested in it, I'm not certainly gonna push for it.
Yeah, I mean, I just know it's really, really difficult to fund ongoing expenses with grants, but you can fund.
You're not gonna fund ongoing expenses with it, but you're gonna fund this and that, it certainly beats taxing and finding everybody so that you can fund your ongoing expenses like we did with this budget, which really, I hated everything about it that we've done on this budget, but, you know, we have no choice. Let's see, we can pay for parking, let's see if we can find people extra for their permits to build, can we find people more for this, can we uh, it's ridiculous, but I get it, we have, money's gotta come from somewhere.
Thanks, Nicole, anything that?
But can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, no, I already, my thought on the, the grant writing is, it's just like, like I already said, we we kind of discussed this earlier. It's a lot of effort for someone who's written grants and then has seen them afterwards, there's so much reporting afterward. Um, that I think if you are going to invest in something like this, you do have to have a dedicated position that is not just doing the grant writing, but then also following up on all the reporting and everything as well. And a lot of what were the, um, you know, the things that Miranda and team are going after were things that don't require additional staff time. Um, and and so if we were going to pursue the grant position, it would, it would just have to be that person that is going to handle everything from beginning, you know, beginning to end. Um, but I'm not convinced that even though there are grants out there, um, you know, whether that's getting grants for training, okay, so we need a grant for ten thousand dollars to go, and but you also want to get enough grants to kind of pay for the position as well. Um, you know, that they bring in that work, you know, basically their salary is worth, um, you know, those, just you know, additional funds or whatnot, or at least that it's covered. So, I mean, I get what you're saying, Tanya, I I think, and, and it's not to say that it's a no, I think it's, is it right now? As opposed to starting to invest in some of these other revenue streams, so those are just some questions I'm, I'm grappling with.
Thank you. Anything else that you need right now, Rita and Miranda? Sleep.
Motion.
Motion to stop working.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. Do we need a motion?
No, it's a work session, you're done.
Yep, I never had to be here.
All right, thank you, those of you online.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate you sticking with us.